...fourteen, here in the City Center Conference Room. Meeting is recorded and will be posted subsequently to the Provo City website. Please be aware that the microphones on the table are sensitive to noise of paper and I invite Ms. Jorgensen to begin the roll call.
Ms. Jorgensen?
Granger.
Nancy Weaver.
Powell Miller.
Mason.
Karen.
Terry Winton.
Terry Harris.
George.
Terry Walters.
Karen Millward.
Thank you for speaking your name. We'll now invite you forward to offer the opening prayer for this meeting. Mr. Millward is Assistant City Attorney, colleague of Brian Helms, our own counsel. He has come an efficient offering prayer to introduce himself as a role with City Attorney.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
What else is left? That's quite a recital.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
I invite questions from members of the committee.
Please. Occasionally we'll hear from residents concerned about somebody enforcing on the panel of expeditions. I was just wondering if I like to add any sources on your end.
That is an interesting question. I was inclined to say surely you can use another term, but I've been properly sure of many departments in the city. I think code enforcement in the years that it has gone relatively well. I understand the victims, not the cops or lawyers, who are in combat with the conditions of crime, as they may struggle with it. They are sometimes irritated by the fact that compliance begins to pay. The fact of the matter is, one of those balances any type of development. On the one hand, again, I interfere with private property. On the other hand, we want to enforce the laws and the laws in our code. And so, really, what I try to take as my objective is compliance made. And essentially, what we do in the criminal context is any pressure on people until they fulfill compliance. And I think I was, I was very, I've only tried a handful of cases in those three years, because most people come in compliant well before we get to trial. And that doesn't mean it doesn't take a few weeks, months to get there, at least half a week. And I know, at one point, I understand we had a number of 12 county enforcement officers when they were in the neighborhood. I don't have any district that has any of those yet. We currently have four, just added two new ones, and I know that's quite easy. But I think, I think mine are the responsible for compliance, and I think for the most part, we make mistakes. So usually, if you want to take a trial, I really think this is pretty still, but generally, it's pretty impressive.
I can second that. We could have initially worked with us on, and there are many compliance issues, so that looks really helpful. It actually does work. It's a little pressure, and people are very quiet.
Yeah. It's interesting to see the rage. Some people, as soon as they hear the word lawyer, they're on the floor right in my office, taking care of business. Some people are a pocket of the council chair, and we have to, you know, use those that we prefer not to do. Mine are, I think, is pretty effective. Those cases where they don't try and keep putting pressure on them, where they did a lot. Very good. You have very many repeat offenders, I would say, that you have to continue with a bit more and more pressure on. I've had a couple of this, coming in compliant, then it's...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I think, that's a great question. I think there are a few. Not as many as the things I would insist on. Generally, the zoning officer will tell me things along the history, so I have some idea of what it brings. Because I, my personal institutionalist, too, has a back. I kind of share the philosophy, not creating any. We have heard just recently that we have moved into a health program, which is the first code enforcement program. As I evaluate that case, there's no difficulties, and I really felt like, you know, so chumming with fines and things like that, which may be better solution, just in a very beginning stages of that, sort of interesting to see how it goes. Generally, my philosophy is, if I'm seeing it the second time, any person who would have done a first, any type of assistance or anything like that is absolutely no. If there are second time customers, they have to comply, either through compliance or through some kind of service or something like that. I've never had a third. So if I have a third, I have to talk about it. It should be, I think, proportionate. If you're seeking more, you can get them to the property.
Mr. Sherrit. How do you see it?
Mr. Sewell asked about resources, and it's probably important to this discussion, and Gary probably doesn't want to aggrandise his own position.
No, definitely not.
To mention this, but, you know, he mentioned the difference in code enforcement officers and between past history and currently. Certainly, what I'm about to say, I don't mean to indicate that community development wouldn't be more than happy to have even more code enforcement officers than they have today, but recently, in recent history, there's been a transfer, because of kind of a philosophical shift, of a lot of the effort involved in code enforcement from community development, public to the legal department. What I mean by that is that past history has been that community development has taken a position with these code enforcement officers of having them work with the people for some period of time. So a caseworker, a local officer, or a community developer would have responsibility to try it on their own, to bring the person into compliance. And they would often set a notice of violation, and they would send a follow-up, and they would meet with the person, and they would give them a deadline to come into compliance, and then they would try, and they would work through that process. And a lot of times, under this kind of old system, it would be weeks, maybe even months, before the matter of an upper third to the legal office. On the one hand, that's customer-friendly, I suppose you could say, in the sense that that gives the citizen the benefit of the doubt, and it gives them some time where they're not facing criminal sanctions to work with community development. But on the other hand, there was a feeling, there has been a feeling that that kind of slows the process down. So recently, the community development department has instead taken the approach where they send out a note of notice of violation, they say, you've got 30 days to come into compliance, and on day 31, they refer it to the legal department, and the legal department immediately files criminal. Now, and there's trade-offs in that. I think that we've seen some success in people coming into compliance faster. I don't know what the council members are turned, if there's, the con of that is that it feels a little bit negative, maybe, to some of the citizens who... We have a number, a large, significant number of cases every month where people come into Gary because they've been notified they're facing criminal sanctions, and they say, I've been out of town for the last two weeks, I never even got to notice, I didn't even know that I, didn't even know it was a problem. And now, all of a sudden, we're in criminal court. And it's created a resource issue inside the legal department, because we spend a lot of time filing all those criminal sanctions, and then 80% of them or more, maybe 90%, get resolved immediately because threat of illegal actions. So we've taken some steps to try to reduce that a little bit by instead of immediately filing a criminal summons, sending them a letter from the legal department indicating that that's our intent, in hopes that we will spend less time filing cases and dismissing, which is a lot of paperwork for us now. But still, we hope that we achieve the same results. So I think that plays into what you were asking.
Thank you.
Much fuller, especially, absolutely great. The new policy is potentially grand, just about this month. It's a lot of work for our staff to file those. It's a lot of work for justice courts to get their system to back out. So to me, it's not making a lot of sense, because I look back to, you just charged me this, charged me this, charged me this. Same time, we can see justice practice and we're going to go here and be compliant. So I'm trying to find how to mitigate this, this matter I can do. I know, this is yesterday's, we sent out our first draft of letters last week, to the brass guys. But we had a zoning agenda coming yesterday, so that process will function. So we need to get that back.
Do you know whether Kerry Walls will track the, this is new addition to the process?
That will probably, probably be tracked on the hearing.
All right.
Because for her, as far as she's concerned, left her office coming. The difference is, we're not going to immediately file a case, as I mentioned earlier. We're hoping to be able to experience under the face of, I don't know, a case. And really, what I'm handling with is cashless cases where they come into compliance before the two or three, before the five. And so, during this, also, I'm not going to have some creative action for that part. Those departments expected to provide a resuscitation service or something, because it's a risk to the services.
I ask only to see if our interest in learning how this works, as it matures.
And I'm not, I would take it.
Thank you. You put it very well, and I wonder, Ms. Jorgensen, of course, would be able to provide a transcript of your response to Mr. Sewell's essential question, a few matters that, that come to us more frequently than this. And to kind it up and to review the transcript that she provided, I'd like to post that at our website, just to have something that we can refer people to as they contact the council, for example. Thank you, indeed, very much. We welcome Ms. Santiago, and at the same time, we excuse Mr. Hales. We have a rather large collection of minutes to approve. Are you with me as I read the dates? June 3, 2014 work meeting, June 10, 2014 special work and development agreement meeting, July 1, 2014 work meeting, July 15, 2014 work meeting, July 17, 2014 Provo Oram Council joint meeting, August 5, 2014 work meeting, August 19, 2014 work meeting, September 12, 2014 special meeting, September 16, 2014 work meeting, October 7, 2014 work meeting, October 10, 2014 work meeting. I invite a motion to approve those meetings.
I have a question. That we, as I was going through the meeting minutes, I noticed some errors, specifically on the Provo Oram Council joint meeting, and I didn't have a chance to address those with the meetings. And so, I, the first four, I refined, but starting with the July 17 and then on, I applied that for a little more time to go over them, because I need to refer back to the video on one of them specifically, and there are, there's another error.
Are you moving that to defer the item?
I am.
For an extra meeting?
If you would like to approve, I don't know if anyone else is okay, but I'm not going to have a chance to. But the first four, we could approve today, I think, and then move the rest, or we could all just move the rest in the next meeting that I would like to sign.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
To approve the four that appear first in the listing, to defer the removal. Mr. Van Buren, a second? Thank you all in favor. I think that vote is unanimous in the affirmative. We now turn to a trio. Larry Walters is professor of public finance at Brigham Young University, Marriott School of Management. Bryce Mumford is a policy analyst for the municipal council of New York, is the city budget officer. You're here together with Mr. David Armada, who is likewise with Mr. Walters, a member of the council's budget committee. I beg your pardon, Mayor Stewart, and Mayor, and George Stewart as well, a member of that, of that committee. Ms. Santiago represents the municipal council as a member of the committee. We look forward to their presentation on the discussion establishing an outcome policy for the cost recovery of user fees, knowing particularly the attractiveness of the subtitle of their presentation.
Thank you all for the opinion here. I would say we have with this committee, the number of items has extended discussions. I'd like to follow up. We come to you with recommendations that are not taken lightly. We hope that there will be a, well, we anticipate that we get an extended discussion, because the issues we are here to address are not simple, they're challenging for us and ahead of the events in the house. What I would like to do today is start off by giving you some context, sort of reminding you why we're here and why this committee has been commissioned, and also review some of the decisions we made previously. I'll then move into a discussion of what our, the city's budget committee recommendations are, and then, to help you understand it more fully, the implications of those recommendations. Bryce needs to go into the presentation and sort of elaborate more completely on the implications of some of our recommendations. So first of all, the context. This graph I put together from the latest budget document that we adopted that has the projections for the next 10 years, and the budget document does lay it out graphically, but I think the image that it creates is quite compelling. This shows the, if, in the general fund, if the current trends continue without any changes, you can expect a slight surplus next year, and after that, and as far as the ICD of the years in the future, there will be an operating deficits in the general fund. This does not include any capital expenditures other than those that are transfers from the general fund to the road CIP. This is just operating, and is driven by the fact that we anticipate to be regular pay increases, and we anticipate having regular increases in cost of healthcare and other types of benefits. It's not driven by significant changes in what we're doing as a city, or significant increases for, it's all transit tasks and the scale of operations. It's just continuing what we're now doing, but without, but also continuing the revenue sources that we now have. If we combine this picture with the annual operating deficit in the, in the general fund, with the fund balance, we run out of money in the general fund, fund balance, within this 10-year period as well. We've described this as a structural, a long-term structural deficit, and that's, my understanding is that the primary reason why you've asked for this committee to be created, to review issues and then think about options for how this structural deficit can be addressed. In our view, there are three fiscal challenges in the city basis, which are somewhat independent, but they're in combination, they create some pretty significant challenges in the city. The first one is this long-term structural deficit, and the operating level of the general fund. The second one is the general fund capital improvement, which, as I mentioned, are not included in the last, I showed you previously. There is no designated revenue source fund capital improvements that are required by general fund operations, such as fire, police, so forth. The enterprise funds also have capital needs, and I think it's important to recognize that our priority is that the else enterprise funds need to meet their capital needs and fiscally respond to the way. So there are these three different aspects of the fiscal challenge that you faced, all of which are important, and the solutions are, to some extent, related, but we're only going to talk about a part of it today, as the council established the priorities in the previous discussion.
These are available, your, your, since most, we have, we have, okay, I think.
Previously, the council had some discussions about what the priorities are for generating new revenues. And this, based on the information that we were provided, this is the ranking that came out, the user fee increases and the recreation arts and arts tax would be, you'd be willing to consider first. Beyond that, impacting increases, further rate increases, utilities online, the little roundy pieces there indicate, my understanding of that, that is one member of the council that has a sense of that, of that, very good. So we're here today to talk about this, this topic, user fees. And we have some recommendations on how to think about user fees differently, compared to situations, you know, implications, they're different, they're spelled out earlier, whether they're righties, if they're, but... Let me go through the recommendations that we have. Our first recommendation is that for any service that we provide as a city, which we can identify and collect a need for, we should be capturing 100% of the direct costs of providing the service. We know, to the extent, I'm sure you knew well, that not all fees that we now have in place meet that standard. We suggest that the council adopt a position, whether it be resolution or an end statement or whatever your deal is, a little bit, that you make a firm commitment that 100% of the direct costs will be recovered when we through the fees that are assessed. We also suggest then that that means the city needs to track and charge all identifiable direct costs to the extent, right now, there are some direct costs that are sort of pushed off into the indirect cost category, and, and there hasn't been a concerted effort in the past to track the direct costs of providing the services. We suggest that there be some change, and that at least periodically, an effort be made to document the direct costs for services, so that these direct costs can be built into the fee structure. We suggest further that the council admit to cover a predetermined amount of indirect costs, it's be a dollar amount probably, and that that share of the indirect costs that need to be recovered will be allocated then, based on some portion, some strategy that the council adopts, for how that direct cost would be added, how the indirect costs would be averaged, the direct costs will arrive in final payment. Now, I'm being a little bit vague on how that transferred, how that calculation is working, because that's mostly what prices are, is the strategy that we discussed as a committee, we feel comfortable with it, we recommend it to the council, but, but it's a way, it's a way of thinking about the indirect cost recovery. The key point is, go after all of the direct costs and slow share of indirect costs. And I'm living at the cost plus level, the direct cost plus the slow share of the indirect cost. Now, a final recommendation that we could argue is that if you, as a council, decide, for whatever reason, to set a fee at some level below that direct cost plus level, we think we need to identify how that shortfall in revenue is being funded, whether it be, we're going to do something, not someplace else, to offset that lost revenue, or we're going to increase the revenue from some other source, some opportunity to profit, and increase it, so that's what we're recommending. What we're recommending is, identify specifically how you cover that shortfall. Remember, the context of all of this is to have a long-term structural deficit in the general fund, and in order to correct that, there has to be new revenue generated. So if we adopt a strategy that says, let us go after the user fees, let's correct, collect 100% of the indirect costs, or some significant share of indirect costs, then you make a decision in specific instances not to do that, you're saying we're going to push those costs off elsewhere in the budget, we're just suggesting take the time to identify exactly where.
Larry, I, could, do you want to, did these help us understand a little bit more of the difference between the direct costs and, like, give us some examples of that?
Absolutely.
Okay, hold on that.
Yeah, so at this point, I thought it would be helpful to recognize and be clear what the difference between the directed and indirect costs is, and these things will have a lot much to say about this. By direct cost, we mean a cost which is traceable and clearly linked to a service event. Examples, a building inspector goes out and conducts an inspection, or the cost of materials and employees' time to provide a recreation license. Those are direct costs. The indirect costs are also real costs, they are incurred by the city, but it's much tougher to tie them to a specific service event. Things such as the manager's time to supervise that building inspector. He's got lots of other things going on, and it's not specifically this inspection, but the costs are still real. Or the maintenance of the recreation center. Those are costs which have to be covered somehow in the budget, and can't be tied directly to a service, but some share of those costs can be linked to that service, and should be. So we're collecting the... So we're collecting the direct costs of the inspection, the class, and some share of the indirect costs through the fee that we actually charge. So, is this going to solve the problem? Well, the first issue that you have to address, and we have those first two priorities, you have both an operating shortfall and a capital improvement fee for the general fund. And one of the issues the council is going to have to confront is how to allocate any new monies that are generated through increased user fees. The priorities that I identified, that you set earlier, my understanding is that those were set in the context of we need to generate more money for capital improvements in the general fund, wherever they want to go. What first question goes is that you really have these two feeding demands of those resources. One is the long-term structural deficit in the operating budget, as well as the shortfall and the real, very real needs for capital improvements linked to the general fund. So that's the first question, where, how are we going to allocate the money? The user fee increases will not generate enough money to solve any of those three problems, three issues that I identified. We, it's difficult to get a good handle, and I'm sure Denise will have more to say about this, but, actually, I don't know if we'll be generally. The preliminary numbers that I ran suggests that it's somewhere between $700 to $1.5 million, $700,000 to $1.5 million a year. That's very common, that's my estimate, they want nothing to do with those projections, so, well, I, I'll take ownership of those, but I think it's, it's something in that order of banking. So it's a significant step, but it's well short of the $7 million a year that now is going to be in the general fund. But it is an important next step. With that, I'm going to turn the time to, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. We wanted to kind of give some background with this to the approach we put in, coming up with the cost recovery philosophy, and also talk about some of the considerations the council is probably going to face, and then talk about the actual model that, the cost recovery model that we're going to recommend to the council. And so, setting up background, the study of user fees has been an attempt of the council through their intent statements, and then again with the 2015 budget priorities resolution. And so as Larry talked about, Mr. Walters talked about, he referenced some examples of user fees, and these are just two recreation fees, is a service that we provide, we provide a recreation center to residents, we provide classes to residents. And so, that's something, that is an example, in a cemetery plot, is an example of a user fee. So, but this has long been an interest of the council, and so we feel like this is something the council is interested in, going forward, and at the request of the budget committee, we move forward with some research to bring this forward. So, I think it's important now to talk about these, it's important to have a philosophy and a reason for giving these. I reference the business license fee review, simply because as I reviewed the notes, what I found was that the council was just interested in finding where they need more money, and when the business license fee review was performed, they came back with justifications for why we would charge more money, but then the council found it very difficult to move forward with those recommendations at that time, and they kept finding excuses for why they shouldn't do it. And when the actual fee was changed and altered to distinguish business license fees by category, even at that point, some council members came back and asked for staff, administrative staff, council staff to review some of those businesses and find out if there wasn't a way they could get them into a lower paid business license category, and so.
Can I just elaborate on that one? I think, I think a key difference in this is, the council, four, four and a half years ago, started looking at sustainable budgets. Statement, the intent statement was, study, we're going to study business license fees or over fees in general, and consider, consider rate. It was, that's not a very strong or affirmative statement. And so I think what Bryce is going to get at here is, is there more of a philosophy or actual policy that you can adopt that will guide the decision-making of the council, but also be informative to the administration, the preparation of recommended fee adjustments. And then when that hard day comes, and so-and-so's at the, at the pulpit, pounding the fist, so you can say, well, here's our policy, this is why, you know, there's a lot more than just, we just were interested to study this, now here's a real rational framework for how we've thought this through, plus it's a framework that can be applied equally across the board universally, and if we need to make a decision, we can, but we also have a process for thinking about that, so.
And so, the recommendation from the budget committee is that we base fees on the benefit of those services to the community, not just a comparative evaluation of what we've done in the past, or what, you know, or, or any of the more facilities around us are doing. The reason for this is because, and we just go to the pyramid, we researched, we did some research on the cost recovery model, this has been a model that's been adopted by a number of cities, and what it is, essentially, is that the fees that are in this tier are going to be of a community benefit, and so they're going to be more subsidized. You're going to take the larger percentage, all of these costs that are, we're going to recommend that we do 10% of the cost recovery on those credit costs that we can have on us. But as you move up each tier, the overhead costs or the indirect costs that we can calculate that we, well, we can't necessarily calculate, they're going to apply to a specific service, but these overhead costs and, Donna, these are going to be, it's going to be a multiple of those direct costs. So for example, the most community benefit are going to be, are those fees that we feel like have a tremendous community benefit, and so we want to subsidize them to a certain degree, and so we're going to recommend that no overhead costs are applied to those fees. So only the direct costs are going to be applied, but as you move up, it's going to look at the, 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 we may not see as a huge community benefit, a huge community benefit, but we want to subsidize them to some degree. Well, and this is where it's, we stated this number is, you know, 20%. We're going to calculate, we're going to charge 20% of the direct costs as an overhead cost. So then as you move up, say, this is two X, or two times 20% is 40%. As you start to get towards individual benefit, you start to increase the amount of overhead that you're charging, because it's not as much a community benefit, it's more of an individual benefit, and that goes all the way up to the top. But the theory here is that these receive more subsidy because they're going to contribute, and the top tier receive little subsidy to no subsidy because they benefit the individual. Yes?
Bryce, see if I heard you right, but I think 100%, you said we're still collecting 100% of the direct, but 20% that you were talking about was not direct, it was indirect?
It's indirect, but it's, the term we're using is overhead.
Overhead, yes.
Those are costs we can't necessarily apply to a specific service, and so those fees that fall within the tier, say that this tier, 20%, those fees that fall within there, we're going to charge 100% of this cost plus the indirect cost, plus 20% overhead cost of the actual direct cost. So say, the direct costs are $10,000 for this, for this service, we're going to multiply that by 20%, and that 20% for $2,000 is going to be the overhead cost. But we feel like, the total, depending on how many users you're going to divide that across, the users that participate in that cost.
Bryce, on this cost recovery model from the, from the station, I'm assuming that most community, most of these costs we're talking about are going to be in the lower area, we're not, we're not going to recover them. I mean, does that currently represent that, or is that really not supposed to be a situation?
This is just saying that this is where the most, we're going to subsidize, this is getting the most subsidy, and this is getting the least subsidy.
So that is presenting what we're reading costs of?
No, in fact, and we're, the finance, I think, has preliminary breakout of these fees, that's how they bring that?
I'll, I'll show what I did with consolidated fee schedule, and kind of give you an idea.
So they have, they have, they've, they've calculated a fee scheduling and kind of preliminary, preliminarily estimated where they think these fees may lie in this pyramid, in Silicon Street, where they, you know, I think the bulk of them actually fall in this, this tier.
The other thing I would add too is that in aggregate, we would never collect from our fees more than what our, our costs are, our fee direct and overhead, we've covered up to full cost, we've never recommended or proposed that we would, in essence, be generating a profit on our user fees for all the fees that were provided.
And I think that's, that's actually believable, isn't it?
It is.
They go by these, we only recover up to 100% cost.
Maybe I have a section, but that's generally. Does the model come with a formula for estimating community benefit?
That's a question we actually had in, in the committee, but this community benefit is, it's not a hard to define term, and so that would probably some of the council that give direction, and once that direction is given, then we probably turn over to the administration to apply that policy and move forward from that.
Pretty qualitative analysis, and it's, it's not easy, so.
Thank you. Glad to hear that.
No, but, but I think it's something that, once it's completed, you know, it really does provide you the structure, and it should be, it should broadly show, you know, the community benefit versus the individual benefit of different fees, and I think that you can come up with a pretty good system in place.
And as I mentioned, this has been a, out of my camp, 34 different municipalities, not necessarily in cities overall, but in the recreation departments, at the city overall, and so this is a fairly common model across a number of municipalities, and it's, the, it actually comes from Green Play, which is a recreation, they're the ones that first initially developed this methodology, and since it's been, it's been quite well received by a number of municipalities, just as a reasoning for the fact that most fees and stuff. With that, do you have, does anyone have any questions?
If you wanted an additional framework to define what each of these categories are, I mean, I sort of, I don't have recommendations, but it is qualitative, but I think major benefit though is if you want a framework for helping everybody think about these things on the same page, and when you do make a determination, you thought through that in a logical way, if you make an exception, you're doing the same thing, you do that in a logical way, in the same manner.
And the benefit of this, even though it might be hard for us to come up with a firm definition of community benefit, the benefit of having a structure in place is that we, if we do decide that something has, should be a little more subsidized, then we still have to find out how to make that shortfall in the, in the total health of our recovery. So there is a plan in place to, yes, if we, if we do decide as a council that we're going to subsidize something, we still have to make up that shortfall, so there's accountability there, it's not, it's not going to be as arbitrary as it sounds, because we're really going to have to think through how we're going to make that up if we do decide that something is of more community benefit benefit. So it might be helpful for us to define that, but that's what we can put in the outset.
I agree, and, you know, we're not really sure why these were set in certain instances on all of the fees especially, but moving forward, we want to give us a definite handle, especially for that review that will be performed, the user fees, it's going to give us a solid understanding of where our money's going in relation to these user fees, and we'll establish a policy for collecting that moving forward, so that's, that's why we brought this in. With that, we'll move to Denise.
Oh, I think there's one more slide in there.
Yeah.
So I'm just talking a little bit about a percentage, and it doesn't mean that this is where it's going to be, I'm just going to use my, my, or what we call the spreadsheet. So, as, 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 this would be an example of how we may go out and allocate those overhead costs based on direct costs. So when we're looking at our example, tier one, we're seeing 0% tier two, 20%, the three at 50%, 125, 175, and I'm seeing that the, of Virginia actually uses this here system in their actual, they're staying with the idea that, that the community, that like, versus individual, so if you want to bring them to the spreadsheet, so just keep those in mind where we're going, that doesn't mean that's what we're going to adopt, that'll just help us. Why don't you go to this tier, we have, so what I tried to do, and I thought it would be better in the spreadsheet versus the PowerPoint, what I tried to do is I took everything that we have on the consolidated fee schedule right now, which are all our user fees in our, section right now, and I used, I just went through with what I know about the fee, what I know about the city where I thought it might possibly fall, it doesn't mean this is where they're going to stay or anything like that, I just thought it would be a good idea for this group to see the fees that we have and the general idea. So let's just look at tier one, so there, the first couple of letters mean the department, and there's a legend on the far right, but we don't need that, so this is under infiltration. So bicycle licensing, pet licensing. So right now we charge a dollar, get your bicycle license, and we want to do that because it helps the police with long-term other type things, and so that may be something we just want everybody to pay a dollar so everyone has a license.
That's the direct cost.
If that's the direct cost, which I guarantee is more than a dollar, I think the stickers are four or five. And so, pet licensing is another thing. We may want everyone to just make sure they have their pet licensing, it's charged in the direct cost, I think it's like 25 dollars, I'm pretty sure that's the direct cost either, but, so just examples there, I don't have anything in tier two. Tier three that we discussed has a lot, that's where a lot of those fall, and then we have the tier four, and we also have a tier five. Then the other thing that we talked about that I think is going to be very difficult as we head down this road is our exceptions, because you, if we decide that we are, even if we know there's overhead associated with them, and we decide not to charge them, then we'll have to decide what our exceptions are also, and I think that's what Ms. Santiago was talking about, is that if we choose not to do some overhead on those type of things, even though we don't exist, or we're not charging the direct costs that they cost, then how are we going to find that shortfall? So this is just an example, I just, like I said, I went through the consolidated fee schedule and just used the knowledge that I have about the city and the revenues where I thought they would fall, that doesn't mean this is where they're, where they're state or anything like that, but I thought that would give you an example of how we're going to start this process.
Can you just take you back over to the left on the PowerPoint? Another example would be, I mean, there could be arguments, I think he's done excellent job, but there could be an argument that pet licensing maybe has more community benefit than bicycle licensing, you know, because of the impacts of people's dogs and animals, all those discussions could be had. The other thing that I would say is that we as finance would be happy to work closely with the council staff, just after there's some direction from the council on the framework they would like us to follow. We could come back, prepare this, and then council could review it, and then make changes to it, so we would be happy to try to help in any way we can, so this doesn't become a big administrative burden on the council, but in the end, it is the council's decision for letting other people help that one.
So let's go to, so John and I spent a lot of time on trying to come up with the template, let's go to use stocker tab. let's go to use soccer tab, so we actually asked the parks department to go in and look at one of their, one of their programs that they have right now, which is use soccer, so all this information here is all direct costs, so we asked that department, they're, they're saying they can identify all those costs, and we can come up with a cost for those, so when we talk about direct, we want to make sure that we have as many things as that we can find in this area to grab, and then if you go a little bit down.
Go down.
Yeah, so let's, so can you make it a little bit smaller, just what we can talk about, so we can see where this is, we'll have a sub-total, and that's going to be our direct cost.
Is that it?
Yes, okay, so then, in this, in this example, we actually are saying that we think use soccer fees are in the tier two model, so we have our direct cost over there, total direct cost, and we're showing our 21, our 20%, so that's our 20% of our direct cost that we've identified, then we come up with the 37, 568, and then we're saying, the last year we had, we had 1,200 participants, we just divide that out, we're saying that it costs us, with direct costs and overhead, that we'd want to charge basically probably $31, $32, the market rate for other cities near us are actually $35, and right now in the consolidated fee schedule, we're actually at $40, and so we just did this as an example, but we would have to do this with every user fee, so as you can see, it's going to take some time, we're going to really need to lean on the departments because, because John and I work, John and I work every day, I'm every day, but I don't program, I don't know what, I don't know what's their cost, so, I think this is, I think this is, we think this would be a good template, maybe a template, yeah, a couple of them are still even, I don't know if you want it, you want it, so maybe, so maybe we should have that or something, I don't know, so, let's go to the spreadsheet.
So, Denise, in some cases, that direct, that would be reduced.
Possibly, and that's such that, I think Larry, as well, John are a little nervous, we may do all this, we may, we may have fees that are maybe higher, you know, that we're charging higher than maybe we can really say we can identify the cost, we don't know why we're charging this cost, we may lose some revenue in some cases, and in other cases, we know that we're not charging enough, like Larry brought up, we're charging a dollar for a bike license, the tax is four bucks, I think, so we will.
But the argument that is, I mean, we'll have Larry, maybe it's not a tier two, maybe it's a tier five.
Maybe it's a tier five, yeah.
You know, so there's.
So in this case, like I said, for our example, we just said that I want a tier two, like maybe that actually gets to her, you know, tiers.
That's such a huge amount of time, like, I mean, this ought to be a top two, this ought to be a first tier.
The good news is other funds, if you go through and identify the direct costs and roll up these, then it's easy for us to.
Do this.
We can go, go ahead and run some numbers and see, well, if we add it all up, kind of, or overhead, are we collecting as a whole by taking all the fees together, and if we're collecting 30% or 40% or 50%, the council may come back and say, that's, that's not high enough, and then we can go back into the place and what it means, see where we want to be, and then it's easy because the direct costs are all already there, or now we're going to change in one line, because that makes it helpful.
I assume, as we mentioned earlier, that there will be an ongoing review of these direct costs, but all you can know is the direct cost and the tier number.
That's right.
In order to generate the user fee.
Yep.
So let's go to street cut, we have a street department, so the street cut is actually an engineering fee that's charged right now, and you can just see how complex that is. Same idea, we came up with the direct cost that they could, the total there, that they came up with, and then we did, we put it in the tier that we thought maybe it was 50, we need to be recovering 50% for overhead, and so you put your committee at 303, from here, that's an issue is, when someone does a street cut, you actually have a road, and there's a couple of problems, if they do it in the summer, it only requires one inspection generally, generally if you cut a road on a day like this, the inspector comes out, you've got it, you've done the contact, got your asphalt sound, it's probably good to go, if you do that in January, most likely it's going to sell, and so possibly April or May, the inspector's going to have to come back out, and you may, they may require something else to be done for that street cut, and so they have some other charges based on some summer and winter base rates, and they have some things for material based on sort of footage, so those are the things that we're going to have to look at, we don't think that's a problem, it's just a matter of, just really it's, these are going to be complex, there's not very many of them that are like this, more, most of them are going to be more like, like a soccer fee, where you have the direct fees and then you keep it here, there's only a few that are really, that don't have support footage.
Another good example, here you go, is where you got the material cost of a dollar and up there.
Yeah.
That's kind of, in our, in our mind, we thought, well, that's what it costs to do it, so we charge, we never have added the overhead into it, and that's a whole factor that hasn't been considered in the past, and I think that's really where the committee was coming up and saying, overhead is a real cost that we incur, and it's part of our delivering that service, and so it should be factored into, so that's what, that's what this is pretty all about.
So hopefully those two examples give you a general idea of how we're going to attack this and those type things, I think the biggest chore initially is identifying all our fees in which tier they belong in, and like I said, I just went through the consolidated fee schedule and just use my little personal one name, so like I said, where those stay or where they go, and we may need to get, visit with the departments to find out, or what I know about these fees versus what those are being charged for, or our biggest users, or that type of stuff, I think we're, our directors are going to be, we're going to need a lot of help from them to implement this also.
Any specific chance to do another similar one, or see?
Um, no, but I could find one, I think I have something from here from like a year ago when they increased the fee, I could find one out here.
We should have that as part of the templates.
Did you have, I don't think you had the street cut, what other cities are, I can, I can get that for the city.
The other thing I would add too, I had, I had a discussion with Wayne Parker about this concept, about the discussion we're going to have today, and you probably weren't able, Wayne and the mayor are out of town today, so they weren't able to be here, but there is some concern by administration on the effort and what would go involved to basically do this for all the general fund and property departments in the upcoming year, I'm not saying it's not doable, but it would be good for both Wayne and the mayor to be present at a discussion to discuss that before it was implemented, but it would be a considerable effort for the city to get there, but we, of course, we think this is a real good process from a finance perspective, we're, we support it, but it probably should have some discussion with administration on it.
Sorry, it's me, this should be phased, whether your, it's too, too short during the time, or should we phase?
That's kind of, that was Mr. Parker's recommendation, one of the concerns that we discussed as we were meeting in our last meeting, one of the concerns is that by phasing it, you really don't have an idea of how much of your overhead you're covering in a whole, the general, because we're only doing a segment, like a smaller segment of the overall fees, it's a little harder to know which percentages, what you want to cover, because you don't know holistic, you know, impact, so, so there are negatives by phasing it as well, the other thing that we talked about, this kind of an issue is, you would normally always want to do it at least department by department, like for example, community development, if they were going to look at their fees, they would never just look at one or two fees, they would go through and review all their fees, and so if the departments are all doing it sign, independently, okay, but simultaneously, it still could be done for all funds, because they're doing it separately for their own respective fees, so I still think it's doable, but this is the other concern that I'll bring up there, that Wayne shared, and fun with ours too, is that what happens if we go through and go through this monumental effort of identifying all of our direct costs and getting this in place, and then you come back and the real question is, well, what is Forum charged, you know, or what does American Fork charge, or Salt Lake City, and if the council doesn't have the appetite to potentially charge a fee that's larger than what our similar sized entities are, so in the end, we really don't follow what the numbers tell us, then there's a lot of work for little bit of benefit, so that's one of the other concerns that matter.
Though not necessarily, because we, we were charged initially to make up anything, any kind of shortfall, if there's a decision to depart from the figure, the generating process we described.
Yeah.
It strikes, it strikes me that the great advantage for a municipal council, an approach like this, is it allows us to state a policy that is other than default, which if someone were to say, what's your policy today, we would have, simply have to say, we default what it has been.
Yeah.
This is a bold step in a new direction that establishes a policy so that every fee that is established is principal, and if we, if a future municipal council says, no, this is too much, we're, we're in peril of the, in terms of competition, if we recharge this, then the principal says, fine, because you've got to find the requisite credit to make up for it all.
And if you do that, then you're right, then, then we're, my only, my only comment is, with, with a policy of this magnitude, the majority will need to have resolved, and that will be the hardest part of this whole thing, resolve to adopt, own, and maintain a series of decisions that is in mind, that will be the most difficult part of all.
But you plug that into the market picture, if we're not doing fees, we're going to have to store us, and we still want to talk about, well, our taxes are, I mean.
Yeah.
It's, it's got to be.
And so the value there from a staff perspective is every time we work with administration or to do a report, or we're responding to a proposal, we bring up the fee, policy, and remind you of that, and say, this is the policy you adopted two years ago, or whatever it is, keep in mind, you can do something else, but part of your policy also says, if you need to think about, or else you're going to get that reference, now you may completely blow it off in the future, but, you know, it's sort of, you haven't seen the big maps, you know, I mean, you at least went into it knowing and consciously thinking about what you've done and hired for it, and made an exception for it, rather than a year later saying, well, I'd only know, you know, and that's, that's not.
If I could just, committee, I think, if we do it all at once, only because if you don't do it all at once, you're not going to be able to see at the end what you're going to, what you're going to be waiting for, so you can't comply it back to, you have to see all the percentage of something else, which is, you won't know, you don't know, so you, what, tier one, might not be valid.
And the other issue is that it's, which is basically the fiscal policy movement, the idea that somehow it's too expensive to figure out what costs you buy the service is a concept wrong, it's a concept that hopefully will thank, as opposed to this idea that we should really know what our costs are, and we know, and we know that it's, it's asking burden now, but once this becomes a part of business, and whenever, whatever frequency you said, you review this every three years, whatever, then I think what will happen in the other departments will actually be a boon to them, because they don't have to politically argue for additional money, if they have promised the council stated that we do want to subsidize this, and the cost has increased, it makes it much easier for them to say, this is, this is why we need additional revenue, the overhead costs have increased, and therefore this is an expectation, you know, it is, there's a, always a potential chance that it will be, but I don't know what manager wouldn't want this data, and I don't know who would not want this data, because it just gives you a better view of what's happening with your program, both on delivery side, but also on resource allocation side, I don't know if it's funded, so.
I would think with big budgeting, probably the departments can easily do it as well, if I know what a utility service cost, know how many service units I have to deliver, our budget's pretty straightforward after that, and as the number of service units increases, I know what my budget needs to increase, that makes it, I think, a valid argument to have the council. So you, you are now on record as favoring a snapshot approach, gathering all of the initial data. That's correct, that is the committee's recommendation, we acknowledge the concerns of the administration, but for the reasons that John indicated, that you really can't make the math work unless you've got all the pieces on the table at one time, you think the city could be better off with all of this.
If you had to get this done by the department, you've got pretty much to burn on, anyone would ask, their department, do they have any departments you're going to?
Well, I think if you did, if you have a template, and I think we've got it simple enough, those departments can take that, and for all of their areas, they're able to put that in there, and then finance will have to assist on the other side, if you've seen some of the personnel stuff, if they can give us a person, and they can give us the time, I can go calculate the benefits and the, all those types of things, so if they can give us, you know, those basic facts and put it in this template, and it's, I don't think you'll, I don't think that'll be as difficult, we'll need their help, or I think, they can give us the basics, and we can help with the others, they're not going to be calculating the overhead, they're not going to be needing to know, you know, what everyone's making, so I just, you know, personally, time.
Are there other matters, or shall we just continue this conversation?
I think it'd be helpful if the council had a discussion about, something, something.
I'm just asking whether they're supportive of the presentation. Remember the three issues that we've got to deal with, as, as committee, I think we're, I just suggest in terms of the, assuring the, that the capital expenditures for utility funds are available, as they need to be, that future transfers from those utility funds to the general fund should be capped, not really hard, in terms of the dollars, and that's going to create even more pressure for the general fund to be there, but that's part of the solution to that third item, minimizing the pain down the road, so, and the allocation between capital expenditures for the general fund and operating expenditures, that, it probably, if we take some down, we compromise some allocation, we just put the money, I'm not sure what the split is, but, those are really the, and it will categorize, and I don't believe that those can be dismissed, like, I think the council needs to, again, make a commitment that you're going to recover 1% of the direct cost, that you're going to put everything into the direct cost that you reasonably put there, and that you're going to, that was considered a discussion about how much overhead overall, and then I think the rest of it will fall in terms of what the piece and structure should look like, I do think that the council should establish a process for figuring out what a community benefit is, and which fees fit in which tier, but I like the tiered approach, because it gives you the flexibility of saying, there are some things that we really care about, we'd like to see it happen, we need to cover our direct costs, but we're willing to push the indirect costs on, and elsewhere in the budget, and then if we want to say, if we, if we make a decision to charge a fee below our cost of cost level, we have to pay for it somehow, we have to know where the risk is.
Even though the tiered approach isn't quite scientific yet, or may never be, even as current recommended form, it's nuanced enough to say, from a subjective depth reaction, say, well, it's someplace between tiers three and five, so let's settle on four, I mean, that's fucking decision-making, but sometimes that's all you can do, now we can, in ways that we find the fuzziness of that, but in the interim, you can use your gut to say, well, we know it's someplace between three and five, that's, that's.
I can't speak for other leg, the, the leg utility, but when we back and chairman of the board, we can always, we can always find, find it to, easy to charge, to do charge to do our government people. And that's a fine, you know, the thing, they don't want to raise the case, so there's government people who may just play, but not really very much. I think the issue comes, so actually with parks, they have no money anywhere, so there's, where the real challenge is, is that it won't be farmers. If the water requirement and the street requirement aren't recovering enough in the fees to, please hand, use your fees and create some contracts and other things, but not recovering up there, it's all lost. Because they have rights and property, but they can't, within the fees that we charge...
Don't they have transfers for...
Not only that, but also the operating...
Water transfers for...
They do, they do.
So 11% of what they think goes to the general fund, which we just see that. Only under utility cells that transfers based on utility cells, so if they have other, they don't have a lot, but we don't calculate it on that, only utility cells.
The transfer is completely separate, the transfers is the cost of completing all the legislation. Then the fee should cover your operation cost, and if you have, and we're like, if you promise the utilities aren't doing that, though, it's all probably my line. You shouldn't have to document, you're doing this for those people.
Right up here.
Yeah.
Well, that question would be compensated, but this is strictly for the general fund.
That's right.
Well, no, actually, that I have other fees, there are some in those categories, I have other entity outside of the general fund have those fees, like seeing the Covey Center out there, the library center.
Water, steam, power.
I can't, I can't get anything for utility rates that you call it right now. Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. So you have like, imagine, maybe free cuts of the national utility during CIP.
So we, we're also going to be targeting utilities in the same community.
Yeah, anything, I think that anything that's not utility cells...
But when they do like, they do a full-blown, great study, which is even more, much more elaborate than what we're doing here, but it's, it's similar, it's just more elaborate.
If it's great to different industries, charge, right?
Yeah.
And so these are in fact, those are, and so...
Correct.
If we were to look at all the policies, we'd have 100% of overhead.
Well, that's one thing that could be identified on this, on this tier, and you would be, the council can tell where they want to be. Yet, you think it should be on the upper end of the tier, so their front can help.
Yeah, I think, and the power would be in favor of covering 100% of overhead, if you're charging people that are using facilities. That would make these, maybe provide some, I don't know.
When would you charge 175% on the indirect cost, you've mentioned on your...
I'm on that tier. I don't like this very much, but I would think maybe some of that, like the street cut, we only started at 50%, but I would think that would be a fee that would be more of a developer contractor in here doing something versus a community, community program versus someone in here, you know, building a, building something is going to go closer to that upper tier than someone representing a child to participate or rent, you know, something.
Well, the indirect cost might be almost be double what the direct cost is.
Well, a important thing to understand too, yes, that the percentage, is percentage of the direct cost is not actually a percentage of the amount of overhead that you're actually incurring. But you guys are in a situation where 175% of the direct cost may still not be covering all of your overhead costs. But a good example, I think a good example on the street cut fee too, is you can have a street cut that's for a new sub division, that's providing some community benefit, or it could be a street cut fee for a fiber optic line that's being ran for Quest, whoever it is. So those may have different community benefit based on how the tier goes, so that's just another example of how you kind of look at and find that.
A logistical question for the committee. You have more work to do. Have you, have you considered how reasonably, how much longer it paid before you came back with, say, your final set of recommendations?
On user fees?
No, no. Respect to the other issues. improvements, enterprise from transfer.
Like a rap tax?
For examples.
That was, that was...
Here's, here's why I ask. We may very well profit by waiting until you have finished your work before we take up decision-making, legislative decision-making. At the same time, there is some attraction to completing that legislative decision-making in advance of the next budget hearing, shall we say, that is by the first of May. So that we have, would have clearly determined by that point as a municipal council, how, how we prefer to proceed, the administration would be advised, and there would be some, there would be agreement then as to how these issues would be resolved come July 1st for the next budget year. The business of the tiers, I think, may, may be rather time requiring, though there are at least, I can think of two or three different approaches to that that would make it workable within that timeframe. Is that, is that realistic, in your opinion?
I guess my perception is that I don't see the work being done until there's three issues that might have been actively addressed and that we're reasonably stable for. I think that's our charge, when the council is here, probably will become physically stable. And it's difficult to anticipate when that will happen, because depending upon how we adjust user fees, we won't know is the contribution of the user fees to the solution until we finish that process. So, you know, I've suggested, I don't see the review in the world, that the user fees are going to solve the problem, solve all the problems. It's an important step, because not all, I think the rap tax is going to be part of the solution, but it's not going to solve all the problems. Until we can, until we put these pieces in place and sort of anticipate, try to figure out how much of difference it's making, all right, now we'll move down the list, we'll move to the next thing, I think it's going to take us a while. And I'm not sure we're going to be able to go up with a final set of recommendations and say, "Here's the answer for the next 10 years by May."
I'm agreeing, Dave, if you give a recommendation on the rap tax, I am.
And if I, Larry, in one email, you outlined very, very well, kind of, the approach that we've been talking about, this, the email that you sent today on our total approach, and this $11 million we're trying to reduce, and this will reduce two, or sorry, $7 million, and this will reduce $2 million maybe, maybe a million user fees, maybe with the rap tax or user money, but we still have this...
We're still short $5 million.
Still short $5 million, and that needs to come from somewhere. And so that, then that becomes the council's priority of how do we recruit that other $5 million, how do we try to address that shortfall? And so it's kind of steps that we're, we're going by, but we do have an overall picture, it's just not fleshed out yet. This is as far as we have it fleshed out.
One second.
And that depends on the council, you know, the council has to do it.
As I look at these priorities, I just offer, maybe, increasing impact fees and rate increases is not going to help the general fund, unless you, especially if you agree that we're going to cap further transfers or utilities to the general fund. Because those are, those are not general fund activities by and large. Reduce some subsidies, yes, we can do that, that also gets us back to the user fee category, essentially for then saying, okay, well, I understand that many of those are parts of recreation, these are activities we're subsidizing, that will come out in the user fee analysis. So I think we're going to end up pushing down into this area, which is going to make people pretty uncomfortable in order to really address the problems. And so I anticipate there'll be some difficult conversations with the council as a whole as we look at the implications of your priorities and the needs of all of them.
One other thing I would add too, though, is, as we make, we make this change to the user fees, one of our challenges to the general fund is that our, as Larry mentioned earlier, payroll continues to go up, health insurance costs, retirement costs, but the nice thing is that we're following this user fee model, and we're updating on a regular basis, as those costs go up, our direct costs for our user fees will go up too, so that revenue source will also be increasing over time. There's just some of all the problems, but it will help with that inflation factor and those costs increase. So that is kind of a continual fix to help portion out the problem.
And talking with this before, the hope is that you can leverage success with looking at the fees to the general fund, and that will give you the interest to start tackling things that may be more, more difficult. And I know that this really is easy, there's a lot of the work that's to be done, but it's, it's a great start, and it's something that, that looks ultimately doable, that you can come to and have a discussion. The other benefit, the side benefit is that this council will be the best first on fee structures and costs of any, usually what happens is you get the budget, you have a short period of time, you kind of run over, and that's always what you're holding, you're driving, there's really no time to affect change here. Well, this is putting in the ground where you can affect change going forward, so you'll be able to, on a policy perspective, to say, "This is the direction you want to go," rather than saying, "Look, that's had two means to prove it, and I don't see anything alarming, okay, let's go ahead."
John, just one question on the transfer to the general fund, we're tapping at a percentage of $5, right?
It's 11% there.
Yeah, they're on...
The percentage remains the same.
Right, but I'll, that's a larger... No, what I'm saying is that we should count the dollars, as, as rate increases come in in place, the projections that I showed you assume that every time there's a rate increase, the transfer to the general fund will go up. And I think what the municipal members of the committee are, are saying is that that continued 11% transfer undermines the ability of the, those utility funds to meet their own capital needs, and we're concerned about that.
That's...
That's it, you're with power, and we all know that.
Well, and what George mentioned is that, that transfers are investing the world to the mayor and the most frustrating thing in the world to the council, but it becomes difficult to have any kind of clear physical picture of how, how much you're bringing in for the solution, or just raise rates, utility rates, and then we'll go ahead and pay for allocated benefits. And that's what's happened over the past 10 years, that's why this city's doing so well, because the utilities are run so tightly, probably stopped this year with the $20 million of bonds that were issued, that they're run so tightly that, that they don't have enough money to take care of those capital needs. And so I think that's the reason that we're...
Even the power laws, right, and they need $25 million in bond, and they're building the front end of Hawaii, where's their savings?
And so, and so that's why, but we know that, we, we jump close right away, it's like, you know, if you open that door, something radically will have to change, because there's no way that you can function currently with how that transfer enters. So the idea of capital dollars is one strategy that, that may or may not be accepted, but it'd be one strategy that would then try and make the general fund find a way to be solving the ultimate, and as time goes on, it would also then infuse the inflationary increase from that, of the capped amount to be able to go into capital for a free growth.
Thank you.
Though some places, like the user fees, sort of standard income, as something that will get, not necessarily way for step two, step three, this just makes a lot of sense to me, it's solid common sense, despite the relative kind of condition that we're developing in some of these.
So perhaps the perspective should, could be one in which the budget, the council budget committee continues its work on, ongoing way, advising the council as you reach points like this, where you're united in policy and recommendation that you're making. We could, in the meantime, think of following Dave's suggestion, that is adopting the user fee approach that you have recommended to us. And also, if you have a recommendation about a rap tax for next November, that we could consider that as well, thinking that by the, early in the new year, if not by the, by the first of the new year, these are policy decisions that would be legislated so as to inform the administration of the work that they should do in conjunction with the new budget. Then as the committee works further, other recommendations would come to this body for similar considerations, with the anticipation that they would, that that legislative action would be in the following years, budget preparation. Is that reasonable?
I think I can, I just have a question, for example, what is the bad, then who determines who those are, and that, that becomes a good challenge. Would we have a recommendation, I think, for any department, is that what we thought?
That's, that's our question, I think, I can speak with the committee that in principle we are supportive of the idea for rap taxes, we do not have a discussion about how allocate money and how to structure it in a way that will help the council sell it.
And we wouldn't move ahead without that recommendation, as we continue, just as we have, that, just as we have a recommendation with real grist today, we would look forward to a similar quality recommendation.
But I think we would recognize that you will attend the user fee analysis, recognizing that there are some desirable decisions we're wanting to take before we're using these kind of changes for the council. That we're going to have to go back with the more elaborate description of the pyramid and have to go back to, these fees belong in each of these pyramids, here the direct cost, and here, I think, there's a lot for you to go back and review, but if you would endorse the principles that you recommended, we could move ahead with the hearing.
And in fact, it's probably not as helpful to do the analysis on the rap tax until that's done, because you will know what the shortfall is, what you're going to have to subsidize. So, so, so that's why I think it helps, it helps, goes both directions, it helps us with all our deliberations, that we know this is the deficit we're trying to solve. Oh, okay, this would be our recommendation.
So that might push the rap into another cycle, budget cycle.
It could, yeah, and I think it just depends, yeah, it depends how, how, how fast the process is going to do it. The other thing is, we give you an initial recommendation, or you'd want to give the possibility that once you did the final analysis on user fees, say you may identify other needs of the rap from user fees, that you knew user fees that you just completed. But that's, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't hesitate to start now, I think that's our recommendation, start right now to, to, we're going to use a great analysis, we can start working on the rap.
That's very much work to be done by the administration.
It is, but I think there are some policy questions that the council needs to decide in terms of the structure of that pyramid and the tools, and how to think about community benefit. In terms of analysis of the ramp, that's clearly going to fall on the administration.
The council likes to maybe, better than peers, street peers, would you like that backup saying, "Our people..."
Say more, George.
Well, quite a lot of people want to be more quiet, I guess, aligning that, and keep our, but really wants to hear.
That should have, that should not have worked.
Originally, we hadn't anticipated this would be, once the policy is set, I'd give guidance, the administration's recommendation, but do you want, we work in the committee to that?
Maybe if they can do it, they could come back to maybe also, so that they can, it just works more, but you have to go up to work.
Yeah, and I, here's something else that I have been mulling in our conversation, during our conversation, and that is, in my idealistic way, this would be vetted by the neighborhood chairs. That is, they would be invited to... That is, they would be invited to weigh in on what's in those tiers on the assumption that collectively they know better than any other body. So what you suggest in terms of going back to the committee, going back to the council, you might also think about the way in which that could go to the neighborhood chairs.
What a message to the neighborhood chairs, isn't that important?
Yes.
What would we?
They need more of that message, I think.
What would we, more personally, take the, the, start it, we could, you could spread it again and then give our first data and then just put it out to the neighborhood chairs and say, I don't know what your take will be in terms of, there is a lot of minutia. And so I don't know how, how much people actually agree, but at least it tells them that you want this to be back. And then whatever mechanism they have, but you probably want to tie it down to a relatively quick turnaround time to say, you got to lean turn.
We don't yet know, because we haven't traded this with the administration. We don't know quite when they will have finished their work.
Oh, and I think, yeah, I think, yeah, I think you'll have, there'll be a delay between sales and your tiers and actually getting the data back. But I think the fact that if what you want is that feedback from that community, you can put that out there so that you get deliberation before the data comes in, you've already got your categories set. So, but again, I love gaming, so I would love this data before I commit my commission, I'm going to put this in. But in some ways, it's actually good to feel blind, because then you're getting this kind of nuance of what you really feel as opposed to, wow, if you slide this into a different tier, we can recover some.
Was it a game or subjective?
Absolutely.
We really don't need to stretch it to be these, put them in here.
Well, it'd be cool, it'd be like Walter's tool. You have community benefit over on the right, and then you have individual benefit on the left. You can just toggle it where you want them. It'd be interesting to have a bunch of people fill that out and then get the collective information from everybody that's done that, and then have a way to, that would be a pretty good, that would be, it'd take you a while to do it, but it'd be pretty cool.
Walter's nation builder.
Yeah, whatever, I shouldn't use this brand name, sorry. We do have contractors, for sure. We actually have people in our department that know how to do that, so we wouldn't have to outsource it or anything. But it would be, might be a good way to do it, at least to get started. And then have this council or have the budget committee review that and see what their thoughts are. You could scroll through, it's probably, what are probably the only items on there, 300 maybe?
Probably 300 on there, yeah.
Yeah, so, a thought.
Is it 300 on a script?
No, I think there's 300, I'm like, it's up on that, on that spreadsheet.
The nice thing is you have stored by department. So once you get into the department, also the blog speeds would be a similar weighting. And so it wouldn't take you forever, I'll pick you an hour, a couple hours up there.
And that goes back to the default, though, if you have a default template, then those people that want to engage in whatever of those 300 category fees they want to, then you can get the feedback on that as opposed to having to do the whole sort of psychological battery. You're just going to, you're going to have abandonment and infection before they finish.
And I think if you have two tracks, the administrative track is just focusing on identifying the direct cost, okay, going through that as well. Then the other track would be working on the tiers and the structure, and they're working on time tangentially. And then when we get both ends done, then we just marry together and.
This is a conversation for another day, okay? Other members of the council, further questions, please?
I have a suggestion. I keep moving forward, moving forward, if we have staff prepare a resolution stating our intent to recruit indirect fees to raise money for indirect fees, direct fees, and to, what was the third thing? But, yeah, so if we have, then prepare a resolution. Yeah, so this is the direction that we would like to go. Then we can have that discussion, including the administration will be here for the next work session. We have that discussion with the administration if they have a chance to respond. And then at least we can start out with the committee knowing that the council is firmly or not firmly resolved, you know, to move in that direction. I think the committee is looking for a resolution from the council.
To make the motion, including the placement of the same item on the council meeting.
I mean, we have our council staff creating a resolution stating the council priorities, including, covering all the direct fees, a percentage of the indirect fees, and pushing as many indirect fees into the direct category. And, I mean, direct, sorry, across categories. And this council, those have been prepared for, there can be a lot of whereas. And having a total amount that we're planning to recruit so that we can then, if we decide to put a category that is more subsidized, fine, okay. That's long.
But that's, that's.
On the work meeting and the council meeting on December 2nd. Did I miss something?
Can we hold that down long, that you say a resolution accepts the committee's recommendation to pursue the user fees? Instead of having the whole program in the resolution?
But at some point, it needs appendix or something, spell that out.
Right, I'm just thinking as the whereas, you know. And maybe if they send that out to us, we probably, or it'll be a caveat, and they can look over it and make sure that it states what was discussed today.
And just a question about that you said capping transfers at a dollar amount, was that part of the resolution? I would like to see that as a separate part, personally, because I struggle with that. I have a few discussions.
The part of it was having the total amount that we want to recruit through direct and indirect costs. Because then we can, if we do have something that we say is more community benefit, where are we even going to make up that excess?
More like a capping.
The transfer. Okay, and that's what, that was what I was concerned.
But that would be included, from the committee, but it would certainly be discussable.
Well, I think, as I answered the motion, you're right, that is a recommendation, I think, it's not a recommendation regarding user fees. I think your motion is specifically only accepting the committee's recommendation about you.
Correct, that's correct. And that total amount was, the total amount that we're planning to, just so that we have some sort of, to make sure that we're, if we do allow something to be in community benefit, we're not going to recruit that many, where is it coming from? So that total amount that we're talking about.
Thank you for that.
I was just, I was just going to say that the general fund transfers in capping those, it's not a recommendation yet from the committee.
Thank you, thank you. So your motion. Your motion pertains strictly to a policy regarding.
As part of that discussion, I would use, John, to ease a little more information, a little more background on this. For this slide, so the next 10-year forecast for the general fund. I wouldn't mind seeing the past 10 years as well, the chance of that has been a little more background. Conclusions that reached by the negative teams.
Question, guy, why?
Yeah, I'd like to see how this happens, how we align and agree for user fees.
Yeah, the other thing I would share is the approach that it's been taken. And since I have been on the city, that, you know, when you go into the budget process, most often it's about the gap. And then there's major, there's a happy taking to narrow that gap. And I'm confident going forward that that approach could continue to work. But the problem is, it requires you to kind of cut and move and make little changes. And it's a short-term approach rather than a long-term, strategic approach.
Kick it down the road.
So as we asked his staff, as part of the motion to prepare a resolution, this could become background information that is appended in the interest of making clear what the budget committee's goals are. And now we take this piece related to one of those goals and make it that a matter of policy. Leaving the others open for future recommendations. Now with that joint clarification, is there anything more you want to say about your motion?
I could say it more clearly.
You said it one time, we can say it further.
That's right. I'm going to try to simplify, maybe I have to simplify it. I think the intent of the motion is for council staff to prepare a resolution for the next work session in the council. It reflects the recommendations from the community that are needed to be discussed today. I think that's on the desk, which I am. Regarding the meeting, it reflects the recommendation of the committee regarding the policy. And then I think, because I think staff is capable of taking.
Right, they've been in those meetings, they will.
Rather than listening to the motion.
I agree.
And then with the addition of the request, the issue that is prepared, also.
Are you?
My other question is, do we need to have a meeting where we discuss, I guess, compared to the recommendations on whether the money that is recovered is going to be a long-term operating or that we're going to come back and begin with those restrictions? Was that, or was, is that something that the council would like to discuss? I guess there were just a couple of questions as to where we would go with the two fees and, and then.
Do you want to say anything to the council, that the operating deficit, you're going to hit it all in, and then you operate?
Well, it's, this is a perennial problem, if you have a budget, you start out with a shortfall. And you make it, you come up with a balanced budget, and there are things you can move, defer, push around. It's kicking a can down the road, but you've been doing it for years, and you can continue to do that if you decide that there's a pressing capital for the need for the general fund. And so you say, okay, we're going to get this however much money you need as additional rolling and take part of it for the operating budget, we're going to use the other part of the capital. So that, you know, once we know how much there is.
Yeah, so the facility, there's a, there's a section that needs, you know, to be, there are certain things within the capital fund that we may want to allocate part to that and part to the operating. I guess that's what my question is, and.
It's certainly the case that all of the money could go in either direction, quite nicely.
It seems to me, though, that you will wait for your signal, so the committee is ready to make the further recommendations. So the answer to your question, yes, there will be further needs, and those will be dictated by purely his office. I'd invite a second on the vote. Dave, thank you, all in favor? Thank you very much, that vote is unanimous in the affirmative with Mr. Hale's excuse.
May I take a moment? Just to put out accolade here, I wanted to say personally, I've been involved in several, more than several committees, personally as a staff, and I applaud the budget committee for staying in the policy realm. I've seen very many, too many offices where you can get distracted by shiny little exciting topics and topic length. And so I appreciate this committee for staying focused in the policy realm. Remember just over a year ago, the council tentatively adopted a policy approach, policy governance approach. And I feel that this recommendation is a huge step. And the word, not cementing, but putting forward precedent for operating within that. I'd also like to give a big shout out to Ryan and Bryce, they're my chief, left and right on the development staff as a committee. They've been very resourceful members. And particularly a shout out to Bryce for approaching us with this concept on the pyramid and bringing that to the committee for discussion, it's worked on the council, thank you both.
And Tom, or Denise?
Yes, I get tunnel vision here.
No, you're good.
And John and Denise as well, they've been amazing.
And, you know, we just have some exceptional citizen experts in the history of the effort. Help us try to, really appreciate their time and their, you know, effort. They get a lunch out of this, that's about it. And the personal satisfaction, knowing that they've done really innovative diversity, appreciate your time.
We should have fun with all the letters. The thing is, what we come up with, then.
Therefore, Ms. Sanchez, Dr. Walters, Mayor, Mr. Armond, Mayor Stewart, Mr. Armond, Morgan Roy, Mr. Mumford, on behalf of the council, Mr. Armond. We now have a short break for 10 minutes.
I'm sure I should just pull this up now. Pull it up, Mike, and I'll just do the screenshot. Where do you have to do the screenshot? I just have to pull it up.
No, it's.
Symbol shows across there.
Yeah. And we do, yeah.
And that just one of the things we have.
You are close to listing this on a lot of times. It's so strange to, yeah, so, one. Anyway, but that's not. I don't need some... I think that's... I think, I think I'm... I don't really need more...
That's a good idea. I never considered...
I think, we have to, we have to storage of... It's like, we could take down a window, okay? This is not a, a Georgia first... But anyway, that is, is... Because I just, it comes across. I'm not... Like, okay. It's really hard.
Sure. Well, I do this with this.
Yeah.
I just, you know, I do free service. It's not really...
Yeah. Well, thank you.
We should start charging emissions.
That's it.
Charge emissions, I said?
It's not actual profit.
No income, so how do we make any money? We've had one resident so far.
Just fortunately.
Charge council members.
Start charging $20. Everybody would just...
And there's going to have to be a section for everything else. Like, very expensive building permits, building costs, especially... Our threat cost is much higher.
I don't need some... I think, I think I'm... I don't really need more...
That's a good idea. I never considered...
I think that's, we have to, we have to storage of... It's like, we could take down a window, okay? This is not a, a Georgia first... But anyway, that is, is... Because I just, it comes across. I'm not... Like, okay. It's really hard.
Sure. Well, I do this with this.
Yeah.
I just, you know, I do free service.
Yeah.
It's not really...
Well, thank you.
We should start charging emissions.
That's it.
Charge emissions, I said?
It's not actual profit.
No income, so how do we make any money? We've had one resident so far.
Just fortunately.
Charge council members.
Start charging $20.
Everybody would just... And there's going to have to be a section for everything else. Like, very expensive building permits, building costs, especially... Our threat cost is much higher.
I don't need some... I don't need... I don't need... I don't really need more... It's really hard.
Sure. Well, I do this with this.
Yeah.
I just, you know, I do free service.
Yeah.
It's not really...
Well, thank you.
We should start charging emissions.
That's it.
Charge emissions, I said?
It's not actual profit.
No income, so how do we make any money? We've had one resident so far.
Just fortunately.
Charge council members.
Start charging $20.
Everybody would just... And there's going to have to be a section for everything else. Like, very expensive building permits, building costs, especially... Our threat cost is much higher.
I don't need some... I don't need... I don't really need more...
And these small, I'm sorry, just, these are smaller roads and facilitate that type of, you know, having arterial loss. Sorry.
No, as we talked about on page one, we did put a definite timeframe on page one, but it makes you do it a couple of times, you know, the bike is standing here, period. So, you know, you can take that, you know, this is planned, you know, within the next five, seven years, potentially. So, if they were, you know, we were to vacate that road, that, that freeway would no longer be... Let me talk a little bit about a couple of different organizations here. The first is the Institute of Transportation Engineers, and a definition of what they are from their website. Institute of Transportation Engineers is an international educational and scientific association of transportation professionals who are responsible for meeting mobility and safety. And so they came out with their, you know, guidelines, and they have kind of three urgent principles that, when you're just talking about roads and connectivity. First, a high level of connectivity. Second, expand the definition of collectors, so they, so they, to facilitate that connectivity. And then build capacity and redundancy.
Ryan, my time. You know, I don't have a, a typical terminology for a road network, but they deal in terms of arterials, which would be like University Avenue, Fifth West, Bulldog, Center, Street Road, Third Sound, collectors, which are feed into those arterials, and then multiply. And so this is suggesting is to expand the amount of different types of collectors and absolutely increase the number of roads that people that do, that are...
Yep, and we'll get a little into that a little bit more in a minute. But thanks. One of the things they have in their, their guidelines that they publish, they have a lot of cases, and one of their cases is from Virginia, transportation, transport policies...
Which is starting up here, going down this area. And that's changing from residential and commercial to public facilities. And then the rezone, the exact same area that it's down in, is changing from residential professional office to healthcare. So those three items are on the council agenda for tonight. Council staff reviewed those, reviewed those items and really find, found any concerns with those items. But we did review, after, after last council work session, when IHC came, we gave an overview of their entire management plan. We did have some concerns, particularly one concern about street vacation on 940 north right here. That's what I kind of, we kind of want to talk about today. The IHC actually just barely submitted the request, so it hasn't even gone to the planning commission yet. So it's fairly early in the process. The reason we kind of want to talk about it now is just so that you as a council can start to think about, start to think about if this is something that you're going to want to approve from IHC and maybe some things that, that you might think about in the term of, like at this time.
I think another purpose is just to clarify, you're not considering the 940 north tonight. And, but looking forward to the future. It was unfortunate anytime you had six or seven months down the road as a developer or anything to happen, only to find out that the council's not in favor of what you want to do. And so this, knowing this is going to be coming up and it may be a major policy issue, if it is a major policy issue to you, potentially communicate it early on so that they adjust plans or at least they know that's on the radar and they're not surprised. Or at least in terms of more safety discussion at the planning commission. So again, I mean, there's multiple outcomes that can happen, but we just hate giving people head on six or nine months from now and it's surprising. Yeah, no idea in this relationship.
And the reason we're bringing it up this early because we think that it is, there is a policy question here that, and that there are potential issues with this request. So we'll come over to that. So this is actually from IHC presentation at the last work session, I recognize it. This is their overall plan. The 940 north street, see, doesn't exist in their plan. They have a little street that goes in there, a street that goes in here, but it doesn't go through. There's the plants and trees and then there's the, you can kind of see the, so the 940 north is right here. Their plan is to just have it come into their campus and there's no connection to it over here. There's a break there. So going back to slide one, the reason that we see this as maybe more of a concern than the street vacation you have on before you tonight is because this vacation is dealing with, the only users of that road are these residents, right? It's not part of the overall grid, this is a, 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 a street network of the entire city. It, you know, a dead end, but it's just, the purpose of this road is just for the residents here. However, this road has a much larger purpose, part of the overall city grid network. It takes you from, you know, anywhere up here to down there. And if you close it off, then you have, you have to, you know, come up here or go down. So that's, that's why we see this as a little bit more as a potential issue as opposed to. All right, so I'm going to go through a couple of parts of my presentation here. I'm going to look at the bicycle master plan, see why, we're going to look at study or, I don't even call it a report.
Red line.
Yeah. Of the Institute of Transportation Engineers. I'm going to look at what the Congress, the urbanist says, some, some alternative. So in the bicycle master plan they approved last year, there actually is a bicycling that is in phase one of this plan. Bicycle master plan planned for that road. So you can see it right there, actually a map. This map's kind of convoluted here, but you see the hospital here and this is 940 right there. So you look at the dotted green, it's just a bike lane, but it connects, if you look right here, this is the Pro River Trail and you have, you know, the connection going straight. So the dotted yellow is a march shared roadway. So from the, the Pro River Parkway, march shared roadway, bicycle lane, also. Well, 80 north is down here.
Well, I'm sorry, you have that third southwest connection kind of.
Yeah.
South.
Oh, you're talking about the, the seller.
Where I like that, where you guys said.
Okay, yeah, so it ties into there and you go straight. If you were to close this road, then it essentially eliminates the need for that and probably that bike lane as well. And essentially, you know, your bike path, you correct everyone down there and over or up there. So there would no longer be, you know, connection straight across here. So that's, that's where you're looking at this part of the question.
Well, the purpose of the bike plan has these off arterial road lanes is there are many bike users that are sort of the road warrior, no fear. I'm probably getting close to that thing because I've done enough, I'm not afraid. But there are many other bike users that they will not go on bike if they feel any measure of discomfort, it's not safe, children, others with children, families. And so many of these bike routes are planned for a different demographic or different type of people than the road warrior, like, you know, the guys that take lives in their hands every time they go out. So.
And.
And these are small, I'm sorry, just that, these are smaller roads that facilitate that type of, you know, having arterial cross. Sorry.
No, as we talked about on page one, we did put a definite timeframe on page one, but I mentioned the plan a couple of times, you know, the bike is standing here here. So, you know, you can think that, you know, this is planned, you know, within the next five, seven years potentially. So if they were, you know, we were to vacate that road, that, that freeway would no longer be. Let me talk a little bit about a couple of different organizations here. The first is the Institute of Transportation Engineers. And a definition of what they are from their website, Institute of Transportation Engineers is an international educational and scientific association of transportation professionals who are responsible for meeting mobility and safety. And so they came out with their, you know, guidelines and they have kind of three urgent principles that, when, when you're just talking about roads and connectivity. First, a high level of connectivity. Second, expand the definition of collectors, so they, so they, to facilitate that connectivity. And then build capacity and redundancy.
Right, my bad. You know, I don't know how I ever saw that with the typical terminology for a road network, they deal in terms of arterials, which would be like University Avenue, Fifth West, Bulldog, Center, Third Sound. Collectors which are feed into those arterials and then multiply. And so what this is suggesting is to expand the amount of different types of collectors, absolutely increase the number of roads that people that do, or arterials.
Yep, and we'll get a little into that a little bit more in a minute. But thanks. One of the things they have in their, their guidelines that they publish, they have a lot of cases that, and one of their cases is from Virginia Transportation Transport Policies, is what they call it. But essentially they have a connectivity index and, well, it has a couple of different formulas to determine how connected your city is. For example, the second one here, take the number of intersections you have divided by the number of intersections plus dead ends. And you want, essentially they're saying that, you know, they don't want dead ends, so they want that number as close to one as possible. Or for example, I mean, we're using this next slide, but direct travel distance divided by actual travel distance. So an example of that is, is this, you have, so the top one is what, what they call the conventional suburban hierarchical network. And hierarchical because of what Manette just talked about, how you have roads, collectors feeding into the arterials. And so you have kind of like, you know, your house on the whole side. And in order to get to this point over here, you, there's one route, you come down, over, over and in order to get there. Whereas the traditional urban connected network, and this is where they talk about redundancy, there's a lot of different ways that you can get there, right? You come up and over, so, you know, a number of different ways to get to, to your destination, to the government. And they encourage that. But let's just think that, that they just hate the other kind where they, they, they do say that there are some advantages to the conventional suburban hierarchical network. And those advantages include reduction of through traffic in neighborhoods, lower accident rates on the local streets, the fewer intersections. So very low volume local streets, so. So I just wanted to throw that in there to show that, you know, they're not against the other type of system. But, you know, when we're talking here about 840 north, it's not, it's not a neighborhood, right? We're talking about the overall connectivity of the city. And so by eliminating that street or people, so that. The Congress for the New Urbanism, I don't know how many of you are familiar with that organization. On their website, they say, CNU, that's their Congress for the New Urbanism, passionately promotes sustainable communities and helping living conditions walkable mixed use neighborhood development. They came up with these standards, sustainable street network principles to, to determining how, how to, how to make sustainable streets. And these are what they call the characteristics of a sustainable street. Go through these quickly, like weather streets, travel modes, maximize connectivity, desirable places where multiple networks overlap, inherently complex. Major streets designed and spaced properly, all streets are walkable, wide variety of streets. And then there's some other sources as well. And I'll go through these really quickly, but just to kind of show you the, you know, some of the other reasons for, for wanting to have connected streets and one of the benefits. This first one, in, in the slideshow of the party presentations, you're welcome to go on to it and click on these links. And you can see the articles where they're coming from. But the first one is a study done by Norman Garwood at the University of Connecticut, Wesley Marshall at the University of Colorado, and Daniel Kousky at Savannah State University. And they claim that the compact street networks improve health. And one of, quoting from their study, they say, "The fully grided network, designed with its typical level of compatibility and connectivity and the number of lanes on the major roads, would expect a 15% reduction in road density, a 10% reduction in high blood pressure rates, and a 6% reduction in heart infarcts as compared to standard employee tree lighting network associated with healthcare." The next one, well created pattern of development. Neil Salmon, the renewal energy consultant from Vancouver, wrote a piece arguing that this type of network actually enhances economic development. The next one, to connect or not to connect, Dan Sat, a downtown development coordinator for Redwood City, California, talked about the reasons that we block, why we block streets, why we essentially create dead ends. He says those reasons are because we have a fear of traffic, we have a fear of on-street parking jams, and then the fear of crime. But then he goes into the problems with blocking streets that, that ends are dangerous, no eyes on the streets, slower emergency response time, more traffic fatalities, more vehicle allowance to travel and less walking. And then he goes on in his article to talk about those three tiers and how we can overcome those in the grid. And then the last one, benefits of the grid, Paul Knight, who's an architect and planner from Georgia, wrote some of the benefits of the grid network, like that it's more walkable, it's adaptable, adaptable, and sustainable. And so all, all those are available for people to read. And then I'll go to some of the policy statements. So from provision 2030, these are some of the statements that are in there. And look at goal 6.1, ensure healthcare services are accessible to all residents, right? And that's what IHC is trying to do by building their campus here, right? So you'd probably say, well, build that goal, you know, expand their campus. Some other objectives and goals from provision 2030, encourage pedestrian, pedestrian friendly environment throughout the road. By blocking that street, you're creating, making it so they have to go around. Now, I did talk with community development and although currently, if you look at their, their plans that they showed you, that they showed us a couple of weeks ago, there is no walkway through it. Apparently, community development is informing that they actually do have a plan to have a walkway and a bicycle pathway going through their campus. So they're working on that actually right now.
They also showed a path, a walking path around the hospital grounds for, for, yeah, and I don't see that.
Yeah. Maybe that was just some brand new, or they, they developed, make sure. So, so you have that, so, you know, they're taking care of that. Create a mountain bike trail and sidewalk system that connects all parts of Provo. Augment the Provo City general plan for pedestrian paths, trails, and on-street bikeways. For vehicles, trail walking, doggy trails, and the city trail system, van bike lanes, very long ways throughout the city. So those are some of the policy statements that are from provision 2030. So some of the alternatives, like I said, like, we talked about, if you want to bring this to your attention, if you want to get your feedback and your feeling on, on, on this project, okay, key. The alternatives to obviously the, the city is not allowing to vacate 940 north and ask them to revise their campus plans, keeping that road in place. Grant IHC to the request, vacate 940 north. For this last one, you know, the, the current process is that, you know, community development receives the proposal, they get it to the planning commission. Planning commission makes a recommendation for you, but you, you could also recommend that T-MAP takes a look at it, try to do it in addition to the planning commission prior to the program. So that's, that's what I have in my presentation, I'll open up the special questions.
So where was this picture taken from, is this what?
This is from their presentation.
When they had their presentation, it seemed like they had a roundabout in front of the emergency department. I don't see that on this plan.
Well, this looks, are you talking about this roundabout right here?
But it looked, what I remember, oh, there's the whole bad stuff, remember?
It's, this picture is a little bit different than that picture.
Yeah. And it seemed like it came straight, more straight in from 820, because they talked about the, the freeway connection maybe on 800 north and then having it come in directly from 800 and then having the, the roundabout straight in front of the emergency departments. This, this looks different from what maybe.
I just, I just got it straight from their slide.
This is exactly what they showed.
Yeah.
And it's not 800 north where they come in.
Yes.
Where it is.
There's 800 north here on the side. This is 800.
Oh, that's 800 north, so they come in and it's on an angle.
Sorry.
I don't remember.
So yeah, I mean, this was, this is the 40 north.
Nice.
Sorry.
Okay.
Going to vacate.
My, sorry, which part, which part? 940 right there.
940, this is where they said they are going to do a bike path. That, that's what community development said that they're, they're willing to do, they don't have it as part of their plan yet, so that's something.
It won't go through the heart.
It won't go through the heart, or their roundabout, or the.
Right, so you might have to, you know, go around, or I don't know.
I think, you know, these are, these are very preliminary plans, they're likely to change two or three more times in their campus plan.
But they did say they're willing to connect, to connect it somehow. Now, I don't know if that means they're going to connect it around or, you know, you have to wait.
But I think it's another reason, if there's a major concern, either to ask the planning commission away on it, or the T-MAP, or to express your sentiments. Because, so they don't do too much more detailed planning, get married too much to one idea, wanting to find out, oh, we're uncomfortable with this. Now, it may not be married to 25, but.
Right, and if, and if, no, it's not a big deal, but you can have that walking path, connect these two, then it'd be good for them to know about that too, so.
As part of this, did you do traffic?
They are actually doing that right now, so the CRC, so they just barely received the proposal last week. And so the CRC is actually in the process right now. So planning commission and, you know, the CRC, they haven't come up with their recommendation of whether they, whether they're going to recommend planning commission.
That would definitely be traffic studies, projection.
Yes, they said that they're in the process of.
Whatever the volume is though, and the principle, even, even if you remove the biking and blocking the opponent's connectivity, every trip that gets taken off of there gets plugged into your arterials, those are, those are maybe small numbers, but they add up. So you can see congestion problems, citywide, which can have a ripple effect citywide, so. You know, I think the general principle is, you sacrifice a street here and there, sure, sacrifice many streets, it does have a systemic effect.
Well, and if the hospital wants to know how that affects 800 west, it's already suggested, they're trying to get emergency vehicles.
Well, that is one thing actually, we don't put it in here, but it's a little thought that came across in my mind earlier, it was. And sure, they're thinking of emergency access, but even from an emergency access point of view, you want as many options available to you as an ambulance driver to get as fast as you can to the ambulance. So I'm not sure why you would want to make an ambulance all the way down to 800 north, all the way over to the, or west when you could maybe, you know, save 10 seconds off by going straight through it itself. I mean, even from an emergency vehicle perspective, my, I think, I would think there's concerns trying that. But we're not.
So, so there's, you know, like I said, the reason we're bringing this up, you don't have to make a decision today, it's not for you for, for today. But more of a general guideline of what are your feelings about it, what are your priorities, so that, you know, kind of take that back.
Or you can choose to remain silent now, I just, again, we felt this was a big enough issue that early discussion may be.
And I think as we have this discussion, I know that on the 800, 840, what is it, 840, this one, the 800 we're talking about tonight.
Uh, maybe it's. Yeah, we can, right here.
Those are two vacations where we have the law, getting anything. Is 940, do we have a terminal to take and answer this question? Is that the same type of vacation that they'd be asking for, or is that the city old street where they'd be interested in purchasing?
It's likely different because the subdivision laws that you're considering tonight came from a flat, so there's a different set of rules, a different set of laws that govern vacating a subdivision road that comes from a flat. I suspect 940 is different because there's no traditional flats. We did not specifically look at 940, I can verify that.
I just wonder.
There are some older flats, some 40s and 50s that were already consumed by IHC in the 60s. And so it may be a relevant dedication, but it may be otherwise to maybe sit on right now.
We, we can certainly look into that and find out what the situation.
I just wonder if they're going to think, well, we're just taking this, or if they, it's something that we have to look at as a council, like we're taking.
And that was.
We're going to kind of outline using this map, the items of business.
So the first item of business is vacating this, this road right here. So from here to here, from 300, just down here. So this would still remain a road for business. So that's the first item. The second item is a general plan amendment, starting right here in this corner, going up, and all of this piece. That's the general plan amendment from residential and commercial to.
Public facilities.
And then the third one is the rezone of that same area from residential and public office to healthcare.
And why do they include the block up there, is that?
Off the.
Yes.
Well, you look at.
Is it, is that what they're just going to do to?
It's like a vacating.
Any other questions or concerns or discussion?
Well, I think that the T-MAP import, you know, for something this major, is a four-block area, basically, without through the street and to, to have that much of public collection as much. Guidance gap of all the communities of, of street.
Could we hear from Mr. Dicker on any concern or recommendations with both the street vacation today and requests for that and also 940 north? As a, from a transportation perspective, do you have any voice here?
The street vacation that you're considering tonight, I don't think anybody in public works has any concerns because they're very flat road, very local roads. And I, I think there's one or two homes that's, that are still using the utilities, but it's outside of the area right now. I don't think there are any concerns. I think on 940, we do have some utilities in 940 that would have to be here rerouted or accommodated. And I think that the, the, the traffic study that was mentioned is going to lend a lot of information to volume of traffic at the beginning, pushing on 800 north or other arterials.
I have a question. Well, the staff's consideration of the matter. I assume that the item, that the concern you expressed came as a direct consequence of your review of the items that are on the agenda for today's meeting. And that you would defend what you have presented to us against a charge of, well, is it just getting into the weeds? By, by recourse to the policy statements from the organizations that you cited. And, and we can be grateful for your calling that to our attention. But it seems to me that constructive action on our, on our part should be directed to the administration. And the question is, aside from minutes of the meeting, is there some other way in which we could express our concern that the, that the issue of that street and its, and its future be carefully considered by the administration? Do you have a recommendation?
Yeah, I mean, I guess not always offering a recommendation for how.
To the administration, expressing our. To the administration, expressing our, expressing the very concerns that you raised.
Right, yeah, I mean, most, most of the reason that we're bringing this up now is because we want to know if these are concerns that you have as well, right, that the council really has concerns, and if they do, then yes, we would like, um.
Well, I don't think we're.
I don't want my concerns to be premature. I don't want the administration to somehow sense that the council is attempting to look over its shoulder in matters of this sort. That's, that's getting into the weeds.
Yeah, I think the intent is more, um, this will be, it is, it will be recommendations from Planning Commission and, uh, T, well, I'm not sure about T-MAC, but, uh, the staff. Uh, ultimately, you would be weighing those recommendations against our policies, and rather than trying to decide those.
Yeah.
Rather than trying, um, do so the night of the meeting or two weeks even before the decision, we're just, we, we saw something in conjunction with the decisions you made tonight, that we thought you ought to have early notification on, that if you did have strong feelings, you had opportunity to express them, if you prefer to go through this whole process, we're not asking you to do anything at this point, we're just saying.
There's nothing.
You have actually faced this.
There's nothing to assure that what comes to us, we raise the slightest concern on our part. And so we're the mayor here, or Wayne Parker here, we could simply state to them, get it, these are our concerns, and we're trusting you to make sure they're addressed. They're not, and so I'm asking the question, how shall we communicate?
Well, yeah, I mean, if that's.
Aside from minutes of the meeting.
Right, if that's your desire, we can.
This is Chad, you know, one form of you can take more emotional or other opportunities. In essence, they're representative, and the opinion of these issues is here, and so you've been looking, Mr. Decker, and it's like, you make sure that he knows about what we'll be discussing here tonight.
Comments, questions?
I mean, I don't know, but, um, I think there is, I'm trying to get some feedback.
Oh, we don't ask any feedback. We don't need any feedback.
If you don't have major concerns, um.
I think, again, the point is, you have an opportunity to proactively engage in this issue that's not coming to nine months from now, and you're surprised, or we're raising these policies, she's up on it last night, the, the decision that you made, that this, this type of points, if you think they're important points, enter the conversation earlier, earlier than. If you don't feel they're important points at this point, you can just move on. If you do, those can be expressed, to be just acknowledged as part of the dialogue down as I go through this recommendation process.
And we trust.
Part of the reasoning, too, is, you know, we, there's been instances where we've had concerns, Patrick, come from the planning commission, but at that point, it's almost too late, right, or they've done some reports on it, it's already that far down the front. So if the concerns we brought up are valid, and you think they are valid concerns, then yeah, we can have the administration, um, look at that as they go through the process. If not, you don't have any concerns.
Let me recommend this for your consideration. Mr. Decker has duly noted the concerns raised. If, 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 I suggest that on Thursday at our council leadership meeting, we return this matter and decide whether to draft a letter from the council leadership to the administration expressing specific concerns that.
When you say specific concerns, you're talking about what staff.
Your concerns.
Have you received us not feedback from council members, that they are council concerns or are they staff concerns? I think that's still kind of. I don't know. So I don't know if they, if they will. I mean.
I think my preference.
You create a letter, perhaps we find.
Perhaps we draft a letter, share it with you, and provide your comments so as to assure that it represents the council and then send it.
And also, like, um, you never have the courage and gratitude to the hospital for investing in that activity. We are concerned, and we do appreciate you explaining.
To make sure that's included. Please.
How do I get a feel for Mr. Decker as how much concern he has about connectivity issues and so forth? Because it seems to me it's maybe pretty difficult for hospitals to work around, uh, this, the requirement of state, so it, and there's, it's like the benefits there is very high, the clothes they grow, and so unless we've got a pretty good reason or feel like it's really important, um, that we keep that open, and it's, it's just a similar option.
My feeling is, and Dave raised it, he's talked in since the last question was raised, and he should probably give a little bit more specific feedback. In, in the two years that I've worked for Provo, this has always been kind of in my mind, that this road will eventually go over the hospital, we've been talking for some time about this, and, and, and maybe I've just had kind of a personal bias that that's kind of a given, but I think that actually that the council staff has raised, it's a legitimate concern, obviously, with the system that the traditional, uh, cities are oftentimes played out in, it does disperse the traffic, and, and you'll read in many, many traffic manuals that that is, um, there's many benefits to that, but I think what you have to weigh is the enormous benefit that you're getting a regional hospital and expand regional hospitals in Provo, and, and that versus the connectivity, especially on nine forty north, it, yes, it runs between, what is it, two hundred west and five hundred west, but isn't, you know, is that connectivity so serious, it really doesn't go anywhere beyond the roads, so serious that you want to give up potential benefit of that region of hospital, and I think that's what Chad would weigh. And, and ultimately, I think from the public works perspective, we're kind of leaning to hospitals and probably a bigger benefit for Provo City. The, the traffic and the connectivity issues probably can be dealt with in other, other means, certainly the bike and the, and the utilities that I mentioned, those can all be dealt with in other ways. And Dave may have a different opinion, but.
Yeah, I just, I just was going to suggest that we wait until we get the traffic studies, we actually have some, you know, real information before we express a concern, to know what that does do to the traffic, um, but it's, it's sort of counter that, which is for me personally.
Yeah, I mean, I think sometimes, I don't know, probably people like to worry or something, or whatever, students going to the high school. If the line on point thirty is clear, they can do a quick right hand turn, and that's where, and on that point, it's, other workers, it's, it's, is that, that happened, I don't know. My concerns, um, probably concerning the base, and the particular, the bike path and the walking path, and, and the utilities, I think, certain about ownership and cost , I would, I would. Also, we have our vacant road, the question of the space, or.
If it's a dedicated road as far as a provision flat, then it perks to the adjacent property. If at some point we obtain actual ownership of the road, uh, through our own means to purchase property in this scenario, then we would be able to sell that property at a determined price.
So just for your benefit, I don't.
No, we don't. I don't think, I don't think, uh, we'd be back, that's not the point of this discussion. The point was to raise a potential policy issue early on, um, that we identified, and, and then if you felt it was important, you could enter a motion or a letter or some other mechanism to convey a few thoughts the administration would consider as it goes through the planning commission and other processes.
So what, what is the purpose? So we will take the matter up on Thursday.
So we can do that later, I guess my thought is just going to encourage the bike and walking path, and that are, you know, looking at the benefits of, um, the hospital expansion out of it, and, and, and.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And now to Bryce Moncrief, for our report on a proposed North State Street Community Development Area, a CDA, generally located northeast of fourteen hundred North State Street.
As a fact, just for emphasis, I think our intent on this one is, one of the charges I believe we have as a staff is, we give them, is review administrative proposals and other items, um, and then respond, and see how that weighs against policy, and just again, assist, the purpose of that is to assist you in your role of oversight, but also the role of decision making from a policy perspective, so that's the intent of these presentations are always to help you better inform before you make decisions.
All right, thank you, members of the council. Um, we, I, every time the CDA has been created, uh, prior, all of us will come and give a presentation of what a CDA is, and so we want to kind of give some background on all this and those things, um, just because I think we may have missed out on some of those, and then talk about some, um, policy considerations and then, I'll move forward. And so, uh, some of the background is that, uh, this, this community development area, um, by, and municipalities can establish them, uh, through the use of Title Seventeen, that basically develops community development into the scheme, and it grants an important tool for Boston quality community development, you can, a community. Uh, and so the RDA should have clearly articulated objectives prior to the creation of that project, to see what happens.
Is that a, is that a pullout statement?
Uh, that is, that sounds like a, that is listed, that the community development area should have articulated objectives prior to the creation. And so the main tool for RDA is to use this taxing limit, and so, uh, for those who may not be familiar, taxing limit is, is what you get when you take the base value or the value before the project's initiated, and you subtract that from the value that is added to the property after it's created, and, um, those taxing, any act of the unit of taxing is prior to the agreement, and that, that tool is for, to even RDA, to use, um, in developing that community development area. And so the taxing limit is the primary dual rule that the RDA has to use as a result of coming out of the CDA, um, block. And so this proposal is the form of the North State CCA, and there is no taxing limit that has been, um, committed. That is, this is just a starting point from here, as part of the RDA, to build the taxing entities within it who collect property tax here in Provo, and they can talk to them, and, um, they can get an agreement in place to take a portion of that taxing limit and use it for development purposes, and as, um, as you quote Mr. Peroni, I heard you last time, he thinks that this would be a positive area, that the school, school district would be, you know, boarding up, as, uh, some of the areas around it are affected by current status, so, you know, this is the map, the red bit, portion of the, part of, part of the CDA. These are right here, uh, these are three, those down in five hundred west, this is supposed to be a well dealing, the rest are records. And, and.
Policy.
Policy, which is what we have for, uh, from this, general, and, and I have, this is the long presentation, I have pictures of the riverwalk, and to give you an idea of what it'd be in the future, but the mixed use land use map designation, and this entire area is designated for mixed use for future, should not develop under mixed use guidelines until an area master plan has been established. The area master plan should specifically address how development interacts with the Provo River Frontage, policies that encourage industrial friendly mixed use riverwalk area are highly prohibited. Um, and the reason we thought that this was important is because no master plan has been created for this area. And so the policy questions that we have, have the, have the objectives of creating this project, I know it's really important that they've, they've been created just yet, they could do that, do that, as they all built that, um, policy of the plan moving forward, um, but I have, staff has not heard of any objectives that have been articulated as a result of this project.
Is that, is that not contradictory? Policy you stated right from the beginning, instead of CDH number two that's out there?
Well, yeah, this is that preliminary step. What, uh, the process that the cities follow in passing with CDs is they first come and say, is it okay if we create a CDH here? And then they, like, moving forward from there, they, they come back to the council out of each of the council meetings, and they identify the exact boundaries, and I anticipate at that point, they have more clearly articulated objectives, but they don't have, they haven't articulated any yet at this point.
If my assumption is just on the, or the A to get to, you know, preparing a plan, they, they wouldn't actually have to articulate those objectives until they actually pop to the plan, that might be three or six months, I don't know how long it's going to take.
Well, that's from the eight hundred people, or it's, it'd be in November, maybe past it.
As I say, as, as like nuance to a question, I would say that you do tonight isn't even ask them asking permission to create these CDs, CDs, them asking permission to come back with, back to you with a, with a possible plan, so it's even preliminary to what I said. So, so I, I was going to say, I don't know if this is necessarily an important question at this point, but at some point, you need to, you're still objective.
Of course, it's, it's one we should not use, because there may well have been occasions in the past where that's, on the wave side, accepting that, so that's, we want to make sure that what we do is to attention, um, exactly what.
And, uh, probably the more pertinent question is, is the neighborhood master plan being developed prior to negotiating these specific projects for the CDA, per general plan guidelines? And, uh, that's, that's really a council decision, I think, you found, whether or not this is an issue you'd like to raise, and, um, we just, we, uh, being constantly helping for, 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 to, to, prior to people moving forward, maybe, maybe this is all a little clue, right? So with that, I'll, if you have any questions you can have.
On the map, can you show the neighborhood, is it just in one neighborhood, the CDA and River?
Okay, it was actually.
Do we include the neighborhood the same?
I think, uh, there's a neighborhood, it's, uh.
River Grove. Those outlets.
Where does Carterville end up? End on Plumby or State?
I, I.
State.
Yeah, I actually do think this, the area between State Street and Plumby Lane is broken to the area northeast of the, of State Park.
Do we know, do we know when that neighborhood, or if that neighborhood has started? I got a request for an accessory apartment overlay in that neighborhood, and so it's probably good time for them to get together as a neighborhood, um, to decide what they would like that to be.
Yeah, I don't know that any of these are starting, these are.
I don't see the massive plan, plus it started up.
So, so that goes back to the question we raised, do we want to have a master neighborhood master plan before we, in that second beach?
Well, I think the.
Are you saying I'm going to allow the CDA to, 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 to?
Well, it doesn't say you won't allow CDA, it says mixed use redevelopment or zoning is going to occur until you have this master plan, but the natural results of CDAs is that, of course, people come in, ask for zoning changes to facilitate the, the CDA, you know, you know, project, and so I think the intent is, let's not get it carted for a course, that's the policy intent, uh, and start building a bunch of. And start building a bunch of this stuff under this mixed-use designation, and then only find out later that the buildings are on the spot and are blocking off opportunities and, or, or more of a master plan, large scale approach, or whatever, whatever this master plan generates, that we, that, that serves a danger if you start redeveloping before you have a plan, you might redevelop some things that are not helpful.
I have another question, it was on an actual resolution, they talked about not having automotive there. And there are, I don't know, three, at least three different automotive agencies there. Have they decided they want those to come around, or is it something that in the general plan, as long as we have there, where did that come out and how did that get mixed into the resolution?
Um, and actually, I'm happy to give some more research on that. I know the mayor has expressed some concern with some of having the automotive, this is an implication, so that may have been where that came from, me from the man. But I'm not entirely sure, I can do some research on that.
And probably the concept a little bit is a very core there, the trademark is very wide, like to everyone, a long time.
Yeah, and actually, the River Grove neighborhood, I just read the other day, River Grove policy is for that sort of redevelopment, some type of higher density apartment housing, just to resolve that problem. So, yeah, there are some competing, and I think, and nobody wanted to lay a reason on that piece, because everybody knows that almost anything is better than what's there today.
If we're going to resolve it, has that stipulation against automobile dealers, like say, for, they won't ride out on the, and it's stairs, it's, it's been there for six years.
Is it part of the conversation?
Often these, you know, general plan is envisioning, we're going to say it'll be like fifteen years or thirty years. So sometimes there will be statements in the general plan saying, yeah, we don't want X, even though X exists currently, policies hopefully one day will be phased out, relocated.
And high density residential, replace the trade part of that as a best improvement, but.
Well, and I just stay with the general plan, it's a type of higher density housing on that one policy.
Where these two neighborhoods fall, build our own master calendar for the neighborhood plans to, I don't remember, River Grove, Olive Lane, middle to towards the bottom, I guess, like the recent consultation. Well, our matter is our own. Other comments, questions, please?
So, Frickville, would there be a way to move them up a little quicker, or is there any way to get that, that input, how something sort of, if they choose to do that, is there any way to get that done?
Yeah, you can, like, look at the order and shift some things to a line. I'm sure we have several letters in the middle and at the end that doesn't much matter if they're, they're seven or not.
I don't know if you were enjoying, we were talking about, I had a request from someone in that neighborhood, asking for a rezone for accessory apartment overlay for just one little section of it. And apparently the neighborhood chair was not agreeable to it, and it seems like it is typically a good time for everybody to gather, to figure what we want the neighborhood to look like. Rather than build a parking parcel or CDA here and address the destination here, whether they have it or not, but that'd be a nice time to not need to go together and decide what kind of shape, form we want that neighborhood to take and give some feedback.
If it's a redevelopment, if it's a, if it's going for like, seeming like, well, that also could help force the issue of the need for a neighborhood plan now, to just wrap that redevelopment into new neighborhood plan.
Mr. Walter, have you any comment on that?
No, I just, just that if there's an obvious need to compare that to a trailer park, or there's a older shopping center across the street, then could use some attention if there's not, there's any, where they're moving forward, bringing the neighborhoods together to see what they're up to, is that a, what we can do to push that forward?
Is that feasible to get a neighborhood plan done before this develops starts to happen within the CDA? Is that reasonable to think that can happen?
Yeah, that, that would be. But I can talk to those people who are heading up the redevelopment, timing's going to be.
Anything more? Bryce, thank you very much. We welcome down to our list, the chair is the mayor's committee on sustainability. He was kind enough to meet with us on a quarterly basis for his, his report.
Thank you very much, I appreciate this, this sustainability committee, with the municipal council for sustainability issues. And I really appreciate that after that last time you did a quick course of resolution, a general resolution with the mayor on tier three fuels. If you'll look at the second page in the back that's coming around, you see a nice op-ed by Governor Harry Herbert, and he also supports him in talking with producers, refiners, talking with automobile dealers, saying that getting, that's fun to produce tier three fuels, sell tier three vehicles, so we're on the same wavelength as. Quick report on what we're doing in the sustainability committee. Mayor and I have been working quite a bit with the Utah County Public Task Force, and we're working through all the things that, we have a flight for some money from Duke Air, to help us size a school flags set program. Every school in Utah County has been providing a set of air quality flags, and that will help people realize what the air quality is on a given day, and then have a publicity from this grant to help parents understand, know what that means, what they can do to change their air quality. Even though most people talk about the weather, don't do anything bad, Utah County putting their task force to turn to do something for the public. We work with the Utah County Health Department, reporting some vehicles, there's a number there that called crafting an anti-organism, finding link ordinance for Utah County. Plan is to make it, it's in two minutes, no penalty, actually, possibly a position. We have adopted the, adapt the mayor Curtis's clean air program for all of Utah County. We don't know how far that will go out there, we're coordinating with other groups, interesting departments, Utah, Department of Commerce, partners on air quality, so, so, we're not talking that important. As far as the sustainability committee itself, we've been working on recycling, I guess you know that some of our capital population has apartments, and a few of them have access to recycling, and we're worried about that, and we'd like to fix that. And so we're turning here, back up to the, there's a second page there, after you've done the coverage, there's that, one page of a brochure that we've helped develop that helps landlords know what's, some other opportunities for recycling. There's actually four, four, I don't know, I think there are new purchase groups, some this house, I don't know, I've heard, heard them look at it. Actually, a new fund group that's powered by B Y U students called Recyclops. And Recyclops is great because they don't destroy any parking places. Landlords hate to put in a regular big, big container, because it takes one or two parking places. But Recyclops, they can stick it in there in the corners, and then they go in there and they pull out the bags and they take it out to the front of the street, it's part of the program. But we're not highlighting one, we're expensing the others, we hope to get more and more landlords, just because something like eighty percent of students claim they want to recycle. So this, this should be a draw for us to, to, to have recycling available. And thanks to you, our committee now has some kind of status in the city, and we have a front page, and the mayor has allocated enormous budget, not even fifty five dollars, but a little, for a second, for this sustainability. Now, today I'd like to talk to you about food, because I notice that, that most of us do eat something like three times a day. And cities are really, if you look at what cities do, they're really good about, about providing water. They, they're, they're, make sure that water, everybody has water. And Bill and his people make sure that housing is regulated decently, so people don't dump things. But food is generally ignored. And I'm not saying cities should, should provide anything, do anything about it, because some, I'm thinking about it because of a number of problems, a number of problems. I guess you know, mayor mentioned in his newsletter this, this month that nearly half of Provo schools don't qualify for independent school access. Food is an issue, and availability of food deserves to study, as I'm aware of. It's, it's too bad when people live a long ways away from the grocery store to buy a piece of food. There's a lot of talk about food deserts, and in Provo, if it's not so far away, really culminated as truly a food desert. But on the other hand, if you're, you've got huge, high density apartment houses, and a grocery store is more than what you can watch to, then you're going to have to get your car driving that full year. And it'd be great, we're going to have kids living in, in high density housing, and it'd be great if we could have a few more grocery stores sprinkled around. Now, let's look at this map, you've also got a pocket in your packet, make it a little easier to read it, the map, the tags on the backside of the, of the recycling thing. And the, the, the green area represents a mile around each real true grocery store. That's not too bad to drive miles, but some of them, it overstates that the availability of food, a little bit like down the bottom, looking for Sam's Club, for people down that area, down that area belongs, you can go to Sam's Club. So for them, it's approaches being a food, food desert. And I'm not sure the good food, natural foods is still there, I think they're totally covered. Yeah, so that, it really have, there's more of a problem down the south than this map shows. On the west side, of course, it's, there's a true food desert out there, the people that are kind of upset about not having, having anything available, they have to drive by the way, this, 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 Smith's is probably, or the Fresh Market is probably as close as New York Smith's. So it's, it's not a terrible problem, but it's not even an issue. So we're going to, we have all these kids, all these high density housing going into BYU, BYU's employing people to leave their cars at home, how they're supposed to get their, their, they're all in two apartments, they're not, they're not going, they have to get, think about that. I think, I'd like to, municipal council to consider a resolution supporting policies to encourage not only more grocery stores that are underserved areas in Provo, and also Utah, we'd like to bring up today, preservation of prime farmland. Now, one thing that's interesting, as we've been studying and thinking about West Provo, we have discovered that West Provo and the areas that are not yet developed, actually some of the areas that are developed, are on some of the best prime farmland in the state of Utah. And not only is it some of the best prime farmland, it is some better climate actually than San Diego. You know, eighty percent of them did have lots of natural preservation, they have a better climate than San Diego. We also have a couple of, I don't know, some of the, some of the, and urban racks on the northwest, and we have a big, very, we have a number of, we have market gardens, some greenhouses there in West Provo. Many cities are, are thinking about how we can get, how we can protect prime for, and I think it's a wide art tradition for self-sufficiency of the areas. We import almost all of food, nobody worries about that as long as everything works okay. Maybe get great, you, I mean, from, from South America, California, Arizona, but it depends on everything working just right. Now, another thing to think about is, is, is emergencies. That's not the only reason we should protect prime farmland, but if there were an emergency, you could be, there'd be a surge drought in California, we're kind of, we're not, we're not thinking about how we could, how we could do anything about that. Now, Mr. Sewell grew up in Salins, California, and they have good, good vegetable growing weather all year round, we don't, but we did have it for something like six months a year. And so it's not likely we don't have some good possibilities. You can grow potatoes, you can grow apples, you can grow squash, which could provide quite a bit of food. And of course during the, during the summer months, a lot of food is produced and sold from farmers markets. Another thing to think about is that government's fault, as Matt keeps preaching to you, that is not financially sustainable, whereas farmland is testament to our dear, the infrastructure, it's a pro business, keeps food on the circle, circulating within the city. We do have, as I mentioned, several farms and market gardens and large streets, greenhouse complex, orchards, and the local food movement is really powerful, people really interested in local food, farmers markets are going, there are restaurants that are really interested in local food, and people like local food. Most of our local growers tend to be more organic, the average food is imported by grocery stores. Local agricultural trip provides some food, emergencies, and one of the emergencies you might think about, especially dry as we've been in October, now as in November, is what if we run out of water? Right now, Provo is the best water, water supply is in the city of Utah, but what if we really got stretched of water? What's interesting, those, those parks down in West Provo, probably have to drill down about ten feet of water. Now, if they could stick a hose out of Utah light, that'd be, that'd be, which you can certainly drill down, but it'd go well. So our, our farmers in West Provo probably never run out of water, it wasn't a problem. So if, I want to be thinking about preservation of farmland in West Provo, and out of ground Provo, is appropriate. I've, I've talked too much, other questions or objections or suggestions? Encouraging the, the establishment of more grocery stores and about, I'm, I'm.
We're recently planning a group to help us with attracting, well, finding first, what, what would work here as far as Utah, and attacking that retail, and using data to support the fact that they can make it here. And so there are some things in the works that Matt might, you know, help, depending on what they come back with, but what, what types of establishments will work here. So there is some, something in the works there. One thing, one question, and maybe this is for the next item, but, but what, what can we do as a city to encourage farmers to grow food as opposed to selling? This is not more limited to sell, to develop, to those types of things, but what can the city do to help encourage that type of farming?
Well, we have two guests here that are going to talk about, and they're going to tell you, and can be done, there's lots of things that can be done, and lots of places around are doing it, because lots of people, lots of cities are. Because lots of people, lots of cities are, we have lots of, you can't just put urban sprawl overall in your farm and then, and then have things always worked out in the future as far as agricultural production, I think. And you might notice that as far as making food more available, a lot of cities are doing this, and lots of public, quite a bunch, which I'd like to discuss with you, but I'm just been stammered about how much is available on the internet. Center for Disease Control, Frontal Block, Grand Pounds, Federal Department of Food and Development, Financial Institutions Fund, the Helping Food Finance Fund, they're all there, lots of, there's quite a bit of money available to help making grocery stores more available in more places. And in most places, most cities, we appoint some city office or city person, we appoint a person to, to kind of add this up, to make sure that approvals go through more rapidly to fine funds. It's definitely something that the city may have to think about.
Well, so do you, one of the challenges in a city is preserving their own specific job, even why? And yet, as many as I can say grocery stores, it is because there's products in the market. And so there's a fine line between those two, having enough, but we can support our retail and also protecting the family, you want to, as much. So there's a fine line, and we need to look at some of the, the planning that goes on there, so we can hopefully get the maximum of the both.
Absolutely right. And almost every community has exactly the same problem, and many of them decide to do, maybe some transfer development, like move to a higher density housing, which provides the density needed for grocery stores and then it's a space for.
And I also look at the challenge of the small market versus the big box, or the big stores. Mine, it is a challenge for their car unit, you may have the most, you may have the state, and to be able to pay a little bit of premium for somebody who's bought a new vehicle, because they don't have the scale and the, so again, we're in a challenging situation to deal with this.
There's a very interesting model that you see all over England nowadays. The big grocery stores will open little grocery stores. So you have a big grocery chain, and they'll open a small market in this neighborhood. And then they, their economies of scale, they can provide the food at the same price you get at a big market. Now, they don't have the range of products there, but the prices are exactly the same. Now, how the city council encourages Smiths and Walmart and others to do that sort of thing, I don't know, but it can be done, it's been done. And I guess, I guess a little Walmart grocery store across the street, Lolo's, is kind of an example.
That is also a challenge for Lolo's.
I know, but this is all, if you were to get careful now, if I were, like I said, don't get it there. I don't know what's happening.
I just personally want to thank you and thank your committee, thank them for helping our, you know, to work this thing. I want to do a little shout out for our chair, Miller, who, Mr. Miller actually took the initiative, wrote the grant, and acquired funds for the Ucare grant that we're able to receive.
I did, I did, he did that grant.
Oh, was it different?
He's got one, but the task force is flying for another, so they're trying to, we're trying to get a little, same agency.
It's the same agency, okay. And he also did, also acquired grant money for this thing.
Against all expectations, I think he made a way to get that grant. It was time he sat down and wrote it for weekend, and he told me that.
As far as the grocery stores, I know the food ops are important, but if, in your discussion with administration, do you have any suggestions for us on policies to provide that, that's, I'm sure really?
What do you mean, I didn't get enough to provide a customer base to provide, to make it profitable for a grocery store to be placed in a given area?
Well, just more generally, what type of policies encourage replacement of neighborhood grocery stores that have these items? What we can do.
Well, it's about top, my top concern, my biggest is that a lot of the parking requirements are, make it very difficult for us to call grocery stores. And so obviously some flexibility on parking, that's really helpful. If we look in the, in the walkable cities, they point out that we just have enormous parking, a constant parking, it's roughly the same as a constant national advance. We pay roughly as much for parking as we pay for taxes. And most, most serious stores have huge parking lots around, which are almost never filled. And so they're always looking at a place to bring in various retailers and things to fill those parking lots, because the city's requirements have always been too low. So if you get a place like Sour Market, or like Sour's Market, what I think your own record is wanting to do, you gotta be good with the parking lot. And I think that can be done, probably, because there's lots of high-density housing that people can watch. So thinking about maybe flexibility of parking, that's a simple issue. Another one, looking for places where there is high-density housing, but see if there is no question for that. By the way, on Fifth North, there's that great big monster, it's a park and park complex that went in there, which is huge. And I've been asking, was it one grocery store inside there? They got one pizza joint, say, that's all good back. And they could have put a little, they didn't handle a parking area, you know, and what's, all is, people's driving off.
I'd say pizza establishment.
Pizza establishment.
Is there anyone who would object to our inviting staff to draft a statement of resolution? This would be the resolution from the council to the administration in favor of two items to be made.
My favorite challenge with that is the fact that I see conflict ideas in there. And I guess that conflict is the idea of balance in most cases. I do see that more grocery stores somehow is equating, especially with one company, is the number of food ops and the protection that's around. So I see a little bit of conflict, but I do see it, we can evolve, that's what the goal is.
It isn't coming on us to resolve the conflict.
Good point, good point.
I'm not sure, I'm not, I know the business of trying to preserve prime farmland in Provo. I don't know how to put out a resolution that would agree to you. Where the property owners come, these things, they have to mess.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure that we're, I'm not sure that we're, I'm not sure that the resolution was supportive. Only ask that it is, it would be something carefully studied for its positive merits.
One of the reasons, like I know, all over the United States, the pressure is obviously just to develop, put houses, and they're using, all over the United States, the balance is all on the balance.
The best, the best farmland in our city right now is where the houses are probably from, Ben, exactly. I mean, all those farms that sold out, probably developed, like Santa Cruz, not all of them, but they're sort of good ones. They have a farm, you know, there's a year, like farms, there's here. That's, that's gone and done. I don't know, but trying to resolve that problem by pushing it further west, I.
Well, I think, I think the expert will disagree with me on that. I talked to the US Navy, or got used to the soil, soil that had to be brought in, it was a disaster.
Was good for land, but the water's not there. It would take a real infrastructure to create the waters.
There are, there are issues, they're all in.
Are there?
Oh, yeah, okay. It's almost all the, that makes it heartbreaking. There's farms, there's the, the Cox's Farm there, Stubbs, and produce, and markets are on there. I don't think that you can say that there's more water, and plus, it gets shorter.
I think for me, it would be how the resolution was forwarded, because if it's support of preserving farmland, then if we have a resolution that states that, then are we, as a city, what's, this will attach to that, I guess, but, you know, what's gonna be the next task? And as a city, you're, we, we pay where, we don't have money to do a lot of infrastructure right now, even if it's absolutely necessary.
Farmland is much deeper than is to, to regular development, what we rely on.
Right, so that would be my only concern, is what, what are we then, sort of setting ourselves up for as far as support? How are we supporting? And we have to be carefully worded so that we're not, you know.
Absolutely. I'm just trying to.
Or it's used as a reference rather than.
Right, right. It's go support.
I see the resolution being much in the same spirit as the result, the joint resolution regarding tier three gasoline. Just a request to study what appears to be an issue that will take on more weight as the years go by. We'll take this up in our leadership meeting. Thank you, thank you very much. And we invite these two gentlemen, Mr. Wilderson, is it?
It's this Richard Wilkerson.
Oh, it's Wilkinson, I beg your pardon.
Wilkinson, he resides, Wilkinson Farms, he has an organic market just barely across the line in Ora, it's on the dividing line, dividing line.
And Mr. Christensen is.
This is Don Christensen, who's a.
Miss Christensen, I beg your pardon.
She is a landlord in the West Provo, and the leader, community leader of people who live in West Provo.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us.
So we're gonna split our fifteen minutes. So Don asked me to, we met each other down here for one reason or another, and he invited me to join his sustainability group, because my family does own land on the west side. And as several of you know, in working to save our family's land, with negotiations with the June sucker, Delta, I became, or I've spoken a lot with Fane Mason, who's the executive director of State Conservation. And in doing that, I became familiar with this pamphlet that was put out January 2012, this stated to my agriculture sustainability task force. I wish I had one of these, for you, some of you already have one of those, maybe. And in here is some of the science about how, especially in Utah Valley, the farmland is disappearing, bringing into development. There, someone asked me to give some ideas of what other cities are doing. Like you said, it's a super hard question to set limits or set boundaries, and it's, that's also a balancing act. See, it states in this pamphlet, as farm businesses are threatened, their local security is at risk, less food means less farmers' markets. And Mr. Wilson, Mr. Wilkinson, I'm just gonna talk to you about the soil, like he's farming on right now, as he's from the US extension, stating that the quality of that So what can we do? Some suggestions that are given in this pamphlet are to use media and innovative marketing strategies to inform the public about the importance of preserving farmland. It also talks about changing tax policies, zoning regulations to favor agricultural production, lessening green belt requirements. Don talked about transfer development rights, creating a farmers' commission in the city to get opinions of the active farming community. We need to probably consider roads that are being planned. For example, on the west side, there is agricultural land and the Woodward Greenhouse that are in the path of the, the lake, the future Lakeview Parkway, the one that runs north and south, as an extension of the, of the connectors. And like I said, I've worked with about twenty farmers more and more, and one of their families is now being highly pressured to sell their land, even though it's under agricultural protection. And so they're, they're really having strong pressure to sell without highway. So I just propose, really, doing research of the necessity of that five-lane highway to improve some of the prime farmland. That would also encourage more development in that area whenever you put a road, perhaps is next to it. A few examples, Santa Cruz City has won state awards for its preservation efforts. There's a, they got. Agriculture protections zones can be created through the city, but the minimum area of five acres. So right now, as I understand it, county agriculture protection, you have to have forty acres, but so they've made it just five in Santa Cruz. They also have done a lot to, like I said, for advertising, come to our community, you can see that, have fresh trees. And they really support this red car, you know, the red car that you drive by. And that can be part of our city, what comes out, what's going, what do they have in Provo that will be a quality of life to create. They've also encouraged centralizing development, still that it's, we're not having that as well. Farmington is another community that has taken a pretty big step. They've adopted a subdivision option called Conservation Subdivision, I just copied this. And it can be found on their city website. Are you guys familiar with Conservation Subdivision? It just was, they brought in a national, national recognized planner named Randall Aaron.
Right. That's one of the.
Okay. Is he from England?
No.
Okay. He's written two books, one called Rural by Design, and the other one called Conservation Subdivision. What this is, is an option for developers, and like I said, you can help with this, it's a little bit complex, to, for the creation of greenway systems and open space. So the incentive to the developers is that they will be allowed to have higher density housing, if they are willing to leave some of the land as conservation amusement. That land has the option of being owned by them, sold to the city, there's several different options. If maybe the city or the owners keep it, they can then lease the land to farmers, willing farmers to farm the land, in the addition to that. So, so I need to think, who's gonna wanna do this? But Mr. Wilkerson, like, it's exactly what he does, he leases land, and he's ready to be a farm owner, maybe in north, four twenty and south, continue growth. This protects areas of the city with productive agricultural soils. Two other examples, or I guess just another example, obviously Lehigh, Thanksgiving Point, is basically a conservation piece, but they were lucky enough to get a wealthy owner to purchase that for them, as you've all experienced, that's a great quality of living asset to our city. I don't know if any of you went down to the Woodward Greenhouse, they had a, they had their horn maze out there, had decorations, and a girl who tried to influence, have to think about that. So in conclusion, our city has a culture of self-reliance, and we enjoy our quality of life, and as important, that we don't leave our last frontier out here on the west side of open space without plenty. that we don't leave our last frontier out here on the west side of open space without plenty, and we want to keep our food, this land.
How many of the farmers in that area are interested in growing food? Do you know like the percentage of that land that's still left? Or interested in in really growing?
Mr. Wilkinson knows the farmers here, but I mean, Mr. Jarvis, Don brought up a couple of names and stuffs. But I think a first step, like I said, would be some assistance for farmers' coalition to see what the constraints of those farmers are. If it's, Mr. Wilkinson's going to talk about monies that can come in to pay for easements on their land to take away development rights there. I think the other, the other option where developers, you know, if farmers want to sell the land, that developers can come in and put this agreement out, be able to do the higher density that they'll provide.
You're asking the city to kind of roll her that that agreement, or?
Um, just to have it as an option for developers. I say this is a part of the zoning code, just call it check for twelve, conservation subdivision, subdivision development.
So that it's an option and maybe strongly encouraged to developers.
It might be interesting to note that one of the answers as to why there's not a great deal of market garden in US Provo was that the local food movement is just getting going. And another thing is, Mr. Wilkinson points out that without a sense of how prominent that is going to be as far as agricultural land, people are a little reluctant to start, do they, the infrastructure they have to do to make a good market garden out of it? So my guess is, if we say, we're willing to support you, if you're interested, more people would come forward to be market gardeners. There's a fair amount of sweet corn raised out there, some orchards, but most of them tend to be less intensive than than market garden.
But we do have cattle farmers.
Cattle farmers.
Any questions about subdivision?
We actually have the ordinance already underfoot, based off Randall Hart's work, established about nineteen ninety-eight.
It's largely fallen out of disuse?
It has. It largely has fallen out of disuse, largely because most of the west side development has been of such small scale, it's premium, ten or less acres. And that the resulting open space has been marginal best and not productive. It's usually been used as sort of leftover, it's green space that's being handled by H O A. Now, certainly, we would look at it, we'd be changing and modifying it, but there was sort of a policy shift about six, eight, seven years ago to stop recommending that the council consider that as an option. It has a small, smaller scale pieces, the way the ordinance is currently designed just didn't yield a functional, well thought out open space. My gut estimate is that it could be used positively on a much larger scale, a more integrated open space concept, but there's still some trade offs that we want to look at, if we want to revive that mechanism.
Look at that, aren't the big developments right now in celebration, down south of the airport? Minutes each to be there. It's not a lot, I mean, so those are most, like three or four thousand lots.
And then there was this one on the south of where?
In, in, in Port.
Oh, oh, yeah, they haven't submitted.
So what I mean, when you say mostly done, it's a little, it seems like if that was a policy of the city or the council, that would play a part in this big subdivision.
Yeah, as far as the celebrations, that that tool was largely ignored as an option.
And for what reason would you say?
One, they came in their different development process, called specific development plan, which developed its own set of guidelines for subdivisions, for the subdivision, and based it off, here's our drawing, you know what you're approving, we're going to build what we've drawn. Certainly, I think, you know, I don't belly, I don't know much about the D R Board and stuff, I know it's sort of been put on hold in favor of the west side, a planning effort, try to ask you more about that.
Well, on the open space ordinance itself, first, I was the first one to develop it, it was a subdivision, and that ordinance, that the city adopted. And what happened there was.
It was a piece I did not.
We had more open space than the ordinance required, and we had less houses than the ordinance permitted. And still, the city council was bothered by how small the lot sizes ended up being when you, perhaps open space, you have to cluster the homes like you described. Those homes end up small parcels than a thousand square. So we ended up doing a hybrid and not taking waste of the open space and increasing lot size. And that is what the city council, I've had time referred, but in my opinion, it's less desirable to live there because the open space was dysfunctional. As far as the west side effort that's been going on, the steering committee has taken a look at the ordinance itself. And felt like there were degrees of amendments to make that something they would support, that's something going forward as part of the west side plan.
And a D R Board representative, I don't know if he's in that, the true ordinance with us, as well as some farmers with their, I can't remember. Yes. But it was, it was pretty, pretty much a conclusion.
Three or four experiences I had in working on open space subdivisions. One, one, the development everyone grew up. And so, so usually it was staff presenting the planning commission, the way the ordinance was written and it was conscious and amended. Said, the open space concept subdivision was required unless the planning commission deemed that a conventional, regular subdivision was better. Things would typically happen, you know, the developer come in, they submit a plan, conventional subdivision plan. Staff would say, oh, you got to submit your open space plan, and we go to planning commission and, and the developer would say, well, I really don't want to do that. And the planning commission would say, well, fine, you don't have to do that, go ahead and do what you want to do.
Yeah, I've got Fred Larry's book in my office, and I'd like to, I would have to lend it to you. I think my recommendation, I read a book, is that it seems to work best, it's only rated for places where the zoning is one to five acres per lot. By the time you look at building roads and water systems for one to five acre lots, it's extremely expensive. So this whole theory is, if you just cluster that same number of homes, or even a bonus density in a smaller area, all of a sudden, your delivery of infrastructure is so much more efficient, and you can master open space, and you can still have it that usual for agriculture. When you start getting into more suburban density, which is my experience in that subdivision of Provo, it's a very different dynamic. Now, the existing zoning out on the west side is one acre, five acre, ten acre zone, and that's the same you're talking about right now. That won't be a very many more, that won't be a much the way of commercial development that's, these are the states.
I think Bill has an excellent point on the incentive warrants, aren't, as he can, work. Now, it was to apply these standards to, probably to county zoning ordinances where they only permitted five acres or one acre lots. Problem with, I think, our open spaces is they had a whole range of open space requirements for six, ten thousand per lot. Which stated an expectation for the developer, well, you allow ten thousand lots, stretch of lots, and it yields this much density, and then it just became very, it didn't result in all this ambition. And we can show you examples if you're interested in that, of what the vision was and what the actual results were. So I think, coming back to Bill's point, that if you want to come back to this concept of open space subdivision, then you probably got a couple that withhold into your guns that we're not going to down, we're not going to increase the zoning or density in these areas. Which is a really hard sale when property owners come in or developers come in and say, seriously, you expect me to keep this at five acres per lot? I can't afford that.
It's not just a development company saying that a lot.
It's the property owner.
Probably other, the farmers themselves, they see that as their inheritance, they see that as their retirement. They have a plan, they're buying that property, they sell, and when the city or county says, no, we, you know, always have to perform that. Some farmers are good at that.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkinson, Mr. Wilkinson.
A bit slow. I've lived in Provo and Orem since I lived at home, going right down there in South Provo, by the, east side of Orem Hospital. That's where we have the main forum. So I got a little bit of a catch. One of the things that I would like to bring up is, what I grew up, this area, was a food export. We did egg, we're on going on, everybody has to eat, Utah folk, I'm like, environment, Utah folk, they took eggs in New York and all places food to eat. So egg was a big production area, dairy was a big production here, dairy farms all through Lakeview, down in the south here. Trees and vegetables were a big production, orange was major, uh, South Provo was a major vegetable grower. Especially in the Lakeview, in fact, the Lakeview area. Developed crop of celery. You go to see that, celery, celery hasn't been grown here for a long time. But I remember my dad, I've been partying, who grows in that south, Lakeview or California, you can California a lot. So we have been major food production area, so that's what I want to talk about. Well, we never made a lot of money at that food plant. And so we do better, we still being there, we are used to, we're much better than we used to be. So we didn't eat all that pork shit down down the quarter, we don't need all this ground down here in Provo. And so it was a chunk business or a outdated business. And as we go, we create stuff that, the houses, people want, and we have. And now it comes to a different point. We've done it twice, and it's time to take, for heaven to take a look at it. Because we're at the point now that the land that we have left is also subdivided. We don't have none. And if we have none, that puts us in a position where our food is all imported. Now, I know, oh, I'm not fine, I've been importing South America all along, it's coming. But it's, I mean, imported a lot from California, South America, Mexico, all of it. And that's just fine, I mean, I like, British one, you know, greenhouse, it tastes better than the ones I get from Mexico. But I'm not talking about necessarily that what we have is, what I'm trying to say is, we want to give ourselves a spot where we don't have to be building for ourselves. Because if we do, then we become vacant. If you're vacant, you don't have a choice. If you lose your choice, you're off the grid. Soup drive is one of the most interesting stories of events because they couldn't, they couldn't. So if you don't want to eliminate the food source, you're not surrendering. Well, I'm not suggesting that all that is surrender, but what I'm suggesting is that it's, it's not secure. You have to import your food and rely on somebody else to provide for you. And I'm not saying we can't make our own. What I'm saying is, we need to make sure we have facilities or natural resources to make our own. Situation arose to that. So get back to the land on the west side. The land on the west side here is prime vegetable land, some of the best in the state. The land, it's all they're coming, it's all we want. Okay, we've done it. So we can do that too, but if we'd like to propose the, an alternative look at this. Let's look at changing the direction, because we've basically subdivided and developed all of that surplus of middle business of exporting food. Now we're at a point where we've got to look at a cross step for our own business. And so the question I pose is, if we don't have any growth, then how will we feed the people? If we had to feed them? Could we take land and knock out it and put that in the garden today? My experience with that has been, it's a spot that I got in my head, it's a spot that a house formed out of seventy years ago, and it still won't grow. So the area around it is really beautiful, but that spot is dead. So once you mess up that soil, it's nasty, it's really tough, it takes years. Okay, so this choice is important because whatever we do, if left, it can't be done then, it's dead. Now, you can change farmland, but the houses, what these, they don't give me a rent. Do we have enough land to support us even now? I say it's a pretty scary. So we have, I mean, some, I miss your, uh, our soil scientists. Ben, Bruce Webb. Bruce Webb. Bruce Webb is our, Ben, the soil science, I have to be, I use the best, earlier four years, when he retired, he, he gave me that. And he says, all along the land, like, to crime, 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 it's an essence state. So if Salt Lake County can't provide for themselves, and we have an ass farmland, we probably will do, if we can provide it for them too. So if we have enough, I'd say if we can kind of import that now. Question is, a lot of people are like, and Don asked me, how could it be? So celebration development is sitting on, is sitting on one of the best pieces of farmland in the whole state. And that's bad. I'd like him to free this chart. And those are the parts, the USDA Agriculture, and it's got a number of programs there, the first one I mentioned, the three brand. The USDA has come out with a program, and this program provides for farmland. Okay, so we've got these farmers who want their money because they need to retire, or they need to satisfy their siblings for their land, it's time to pass it down. And this is what this helps me, because it gives them an alternative. Because the dairy farm is down in South Provo, or on West Provo, the Bunnell Dairy Farm. There's two brothers that run the farm, those two brothers like, and they live in Dog, they run the dairy farm. And their siblings are not in the, mother just died last year, she would never let me live. She would never let me live. These two brothers, Dr. Kirk, you told me, last week he went out and spread the word. At least there were a little, yes, helping us out. Mayors came out there, just talked, kept, protecting the God that spread this thing in the north, too close to their farm, Karen. Well, he said, you know, since I was in the arm, where they are, and that's true, but it stinks. When you talk about, but those pieces, where you got a high density here, and you got a north patch over here, it's dense. And so, it doesn't always work better to keep them a little separate, if you can. So, these two brothers, they like to keep this place. But they're not for sale, because the siblings want their money. They shouldn't. They're not going to sell, so the only option they have to sell is to develop. So, the USDA Agriculture put out this resource concentration service, they put out an easy purchase program. So, what happens is, they can apply for easement, and they sell that easement, they look at the second page on the chart, and it shows options. So, instead of property breakers for million dollars in easement purchases, they'll give them seventy percent of the value. So, that means they give them seven hundred thousand dollars, and the USDA was saying half of that, which would be pretty good. They could take that easement, I mean, pay off those siblings, and they have their farm, still a land. When they fill up the land, if it's more than gold, they sell that land to their son, or their sons, or somebody, or anybody, if they want to. And then they can still sell it, or they can still inherit it, but if you want to, you can't, can't develop, develop it, because it's always depending on what you're planning on. What is that, what is that, that does community, is it assures the community, it's a place to grow food. Those guys, those guys, but it assures you have the space. And so, they have an option then, they have the option to sell it, as an easement, or they can sell it to the health. But it gives them an option. Right now, they have an option, and they have one first to sell it. And it's not what they really want to do, but that's the problem. So, if you go down to the next part, if you look down here, look to the trust for public lands, okay, on the chart, and then go back here and you see the trust for public lands, see it's marked up, it's set, I guess they're very, okay, so the trust for public lands is an organization that helps entities like Prostate figure out ways to get this, going back to the financial chart, to get the local contribution money, so they can actually USDA provide an easy option for these farmers and these landowners, wherever they are. They also establish, uh, some kind of voter initiative, or whatever else is required as part of that, 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 they go to the Utah Open Land. And Utah Open Land is the largest in the state that does these pieces. So, this farmer would want to find the Utah Open Lands and present them, they would like to do this. So, Utah Open Lands takes this money from the state, this local fund, and they will apply their skills to match it up with the state, private, now, on this chart, you'll see that there's a spot here, it's just quality competition. And they, or the state funds are doing this. The state fund hasn't been funded until the year we come. So, that's why we're here to help the local, city, and county, so, out around the state. So, we have Weaver County, we're looking at, it's really serious, we've got the same problems we got here. Some counties are already in, Salt Lake County's already dead. Salt Lake County has a bad, like, reserves, I mean, a dead horse. And, uh, so, we're hoping that we can get something where you, the city, can do this sort of thing, so that these people have a choice, you know, have to sell, you know, you have to keep, you know, keep, you know, obviously. Utah Open Lands attracts private money to help, the city has a data policy, and they've been able to help with the, this quality competition, supervises the deraying and allocation, you can do that. But in the topic they have here, see, since two thousand, it is, they receive twenty-five million dollars from the state, and they use this for all of this, with that twenty-five million dollars, they got able to purchase a hundred and ninety-one million dollar property, kind of private, and add to it. And talking to this Utah Open Lands representative, she says, you can give me some local, which is city, state, or county, she says, I can have two that, and we can move things. So, I'll just think about what people think about these things, hopefully consider these two questions. Mr. Wilkinson, thank you very much for the generous sharing of your research. I appreciate it.
I think I should just mention, Prostate owns one of these pieces, the Dallas State Land, it's about three hundred and fifty acres. So, the Prostate owns that right now, the state paid eight hundred and two thousand dollars to have these, I'm not sure how many, I kind of think they're, I don't know.
Thank you. The, according to your, according to recommendation, Portland's recommending, or amending, rather, chapter two point seven zero point zero one zero, conflict of interest disclosure.
Thank you, Mr. Sharon. Having worked on this, I'm not sure if I accuse myself of, I'll reiterate, right, before. So, you have, as an attachment, a draft of a project for trust, proposal. And I stopped her upon an recommendation at this time, because we're still, this already aside, we're, we're interested in your, if you could have a question. I think it was seven years ago, that current vote was, that basically says that when a matter of business, on agenda causes a member间的 conflict, requiring disclosure, that the members shall be drawn from discussions, on such terms, leave the ass, and shall not vote with them. So, this proposal, which is framed from code that has included in the forms, in their proposal and the state code as well, basically expands this a little bit, and, and it addresses four questions, and I'll identify those here as part of the proposal that we have. The first one is in, is in, you're number one, what are the departments of judicial duty, council member require from our action? To answer this question, who does this ordinance apply to? Previously, as the code said, that it would apply to many public services. So, this one specifically mentions municipal council. And so, that's, that's the first question, the ones that will change the public service to municipal council. The second is, same paragraph, it talks about, in this, under section one, you have just basically, the disclosure is made, and, but, and you can make that in public, or you can make it, make the disclosure to the council chart, part of the meeting, that you can still participate in the discussion, and it just restricts you from voting, if there's a problem, so you wouldn't have to leave the ass, and you can still participate in the discussion. So, the second question for us is, should this apply to discussion and cooperation for just public? The third question is, what's the definition of relative? Just note that it says here, what council member, now, this is in the first paragraph, when a council member, that individual or a relative has financial interests against it. And right now, your paragraph forwards says, acrostic section, relative is defined as spouse and children, including stepchildren and spouses and children. So, that's how relatives is. And the final issue or question is, what is the, that's defined, paragraph one, violation of the section, chart, last week, of this. So, as I mentioned, Mr. Swole and I have been working on this, and still have some issues that we are focusing on. Those are the four questions that we, that, that, three of those, code, it's a film, it's together based on, on orms, policy, and influence of our trade policies as well. It's intended to be, to be, and several, maybe Mr. Swole would like to add a comment at this point, and then Mr. Jones and, and.
Thank you. This is kind of a complex issue, I feel like very much like Mr. Garrett, but not really honest, I haven't figured this out, but, just to pull back, so first of all, there's a state ordinance that numbers disclosure partners for, which, is that one for, that's for all, that needs? I guess the question is, I don't, I'm wanting to give you all the time you want, so you can say whatever you want, if you want, a background presentation, and not looking forward to that. I have the slideshow that goes all the background as far as what the state statute covers, and how we got to pull that, and I don't want to. That would probably seem to my life to be saying, we can have first. You want, you want to pull it back, that's all right. So, we're doing a little bit of devil testing, the state statute actually requires you to get, have rule at its name, so you can, drink, you might not, so there's two sources for, for ethics, for Prostate, the applied process, city code, municipal, office, employees, ethics matter, and the city code provision, we're talking. So, the state code tells us that the purpose, it has two purposes, one is to establish standards of conduct, and two is to require disclosure of both actual or potential conduct. And that's going to be a key factor later, they specifically say, we're talking about both actual and potential. So, the standards of conduct, there are specific things that are prohibitive, we talked about it before, because we began to, so you may not seek to further your economic interests or secure special privileges for yourself or for other people, either by disclosing confidential information that you learned through your job as a city councilman, or by attempting or using your official. And, and this act applies to all cities throughout the state, okay, but only to cities, this is the indicible, well, I think it applies to counties, but this, the act doesn't actually apply to state officials. You also may not concede or solicit gifts or economic benefit that would tend to improperly influence a reasonable person, or that would push you apart from the face of discharge. You also may not concede such things if they, if the purpose is for rewarding you for a special action. A couple clarifications, economic benefit, ten to a gift, means loans at less than market interest rate, or compensation in excess of market rate. But there's some caveats, that, that provision doesn't apply to gifts of less than dollars or loans in the course of his interest. So, those are what the state law prohibits, any questions about that? Okay. So, it also requires you to disclose certain things. You must disclose receipt of or agreement to receive compensation in exchange for any transaction involved in the city. You must disclose if you're employed by or own a substantial interest in a business that's either regulated by the city or does business with it. And substantial interest means that either you, your spouse, or your minority, you can hold at least ten percent interest. You must also disclose, this is catch up, any first, first, that, quote, creates a conflict between your personal interest and your public interest. So, those are the disclosure requirements that the state statute. And all the state statute does is prohibit you from doing the first, things on the first slide, and require you to disclose things on the second slide. Doesn't say anything at all about participation in the, or recusing, the idea of what things you can deal with, as long as you follow what's seen. So, Prostate Code, like was mentioned, seven years ago, there was an amended Prostate Code that included this provision. And the idea was, okay, we think, as a city council at that time, that in addition to disclosure, there are certain conversations that you shouldn't participate in. And as kind of a shorthand for figuring out how to do that, they said, well, we're just going to say, if you have to disclose something under the state code provisions that we just talked about, then you have to recuse yourself from your state, from your state. Now, it lends itself to, what I'm about to point out is that, it lends itself, or it demonstrates that it was a shorthand version, right? And so, let me, let me be careful, the state, that as a committee, it's very clear that our intent here in bringing this over is not to in any way undermine ethics, or to relax standards of ethics. We're very committed to having high standards of ethics. There's many things about this particular ordinance that are very confusing, some of which are, it says, it says, any item on a municipal council agenda, well, what, does that, does that mean, does that include voting, or does it only mean council meeting? What about means of, being redeveloped, the stormwater services that also is through the council? It also says, anything that causes a council member to have a conflict of interest, requiring disclosure. So, this goes back to the issue four about the state saying, our intent is to have, is to get you to disclose actual or potential conduct. So, what's the trigger? Is it a conflict or the disclosure? Right, because if the conflict is, if the trigger is that you have a conflict, not theoretically only applies to actual conduct, potential conduct, but if the trigger is that you disclosed something, then that captures potential conduct as well, which is very confusing in all of the other scenarios. Anyway, that's fine, but not all disclosures are this sort of. So, here's some examples that are loosely based on things that happen. One of you owns a business that operates in Prostate. Therefore, under seventeen six, you have to disclose that you own that business. Now, we're considering an ordinance implementing business license fees. That affects you because you are a businessman, but it affects all business owners. So, is that or should that be, after? What if your spouse holds a ten percent interest in a trailer park, and we're voting on good land, and the trailer parks, center parks, we're voting for a lot of good land? What if you hold a position of responsibility as a volunteer in a service or religious organization, and we're raising fees, and the fees are going to apply to that organization? What if that organization is taking a public position, they don't want you in them? Okay, so, so these are scenarios that are, and a meeting is at best, under the ordinance of capitalizing. So, we started off as a committee by looking at some of these other sources, we looked at state legislatures, we looked at several other cities, and special things that... that Mr. Sewell, Mr. Sewell, who appointed me to that, and appointed us as a committee to Boulder Colorado ordinance, which has some unique aspects to it, and so we discussed that. So in the legislature, kind of following their intent that disclosure is the thing that matters, disclosure is required, but recusal is never required. In fact, the rule specifically says that disclosing something is not required. And you can, and here's their definition of what a conflict is. Direct financial benefit or detriment, it's distinguishable from the effects of that action on the public or the profession generally. Okay? So when we started looking at how other cities have handled that, the first two we looked at were Salt Lake and Orem, and they've taken kind of a variation on this definition. So here's Salt Lake. They talk about financial or professional interests, which they define, and it says if the decision will have an individualized material effect that's distinguishable from the effect on the public generally, then you have to disclose. And if it's a financial interest instead of a professional interest, you also have to recuse yourself. So the question that came up every time we brought this up in the committee was, what is a professional interest? The best example I've been able to find, someone was a board member on a nonprofit board that the council was handling CDG resolution that affected a grandchild organization of the organization that he sat on. The determination was, well, it had a professional interest because his board had recommended that they ought to seek some money, but it wasn't a, it wasn't a financial interest that he was standing to go. So he had to disclose and not recuse himself. Okay, so Orem City, same thing, now they say, they leave out the entire thing of professional, but they throw in this word of personal, which isn't defined, but they use the same concept of material effect. And they are, they have to, well, actually, I'll go over that in a second. I've got a table. So we looked at Ogden, the only thing I wanted to point out about Ogden is, I didn't want to make it look like every city that us has importance, because most cities actually don't. And many of them that even have one, all their importance does is to restate disclosure requirements in the state code. And Ogden is an example of that, so I, I just make sure I remember to say that. Murray has a very interesting goal heads that may say you can't participate in action if it may result in a private benefit, which may be direct, indirect, gain, advantage, family, friends, groups, associations, it's very broad, extremely broad. And they also have a backup provision, even if, even if there is no benefit, if you have any reason to think you can't be objective, then you have to sustain and consider any basis of voting. Okay? So Boulder Colorado, very quickly, can't even debate or participate, it's amazing if you lack, to even have a bunch of interests. And that applies, we're voting, we visit the gats, it's also a forum, and we can't discuss with anybody else, any other organization, even outside of the, that, 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 that we were talking. And then our feeling was, yeah, even there was a menace on, kind of trying to put pressure on other council members or members that are like outside of that. So, and then they have this definition of conflict of interest. Substantial interest in a transaction or a property or firm, as it stands. So substantial interest in the transaction is, they're key threads. So I won't go, so this, the next two slides just show exactly the text we asked for Garrett on, we went over what we brought to the table, and again, to reiterate that, we brought it to the table as a starting point for the discussion, not as a, as a, so this is what we're looking at. So Mr. Garrett has already mentioned four questions, so in my last four slides, I just briefly in table format, show you what each of the jurisdictions that I just talked about due which response with regard to these four questions. So scope. First of all, I'll point out that the state statute applies to employees, elected officials and board appointees. Our current city ordinance, it says you have to step down from the dais, only applies to city council members. And just for clarification, the one, the ordinance, the draft that we circulated, the only reason why it only applies to city council members is because that's what the current does. So just as a way of preserving the status quo on that issue, we left that in there with the idea that we would discuss whether that's actually right. However, I will point out that there's an administrative, there's an administrative policy that applies to all employees and board members, probably aided by the mayor, does mirror all of the state requirements about, you know, their structure. Okay, so you'll notice here that there's kind of a general trend that basically everybody else includes everybody, okay? Salt Lake talks about public servants and volunteer public servants. Forum talks about public servants, that includes members of boards. Murray says mayor, members of council, full-time, part-time, seasonal employees, directors, members of boards. Boulder Colorado uses the term public employee and public official, which includes appointed board members. And again, our, our current draft, it talks about council members only. Again, that's just because that's what the one we're recommending placed. Okay, restrictions. Salt Lake says you can't participate in deliberation or voting. Forum says deliberating, deciding, and voting. Murray says staying from considering debating and voting, and don't discuss the merits privately. Boulder, refrain from voting, keep yourself out of the room, don't discuss with anybody else. So the provo one is, is a little bit of a compromise between some of those, and all it talks about is, the current draft, all it says is don't decide or vote. But one of the questions that we wanted to do for them was, of all these other things, what are our feelings in the council that some of those other things should last? Remedy. Salt Lake, so it's, it's a misdemeanor in every jurisdiction that we looked at. In most jurisdictions, contracts or transactions that result from the conflict can be voided. They're not in, they're not in law. In Salt Lake, borrowers are suspended, they can seek recovery of the value of money that they see lost because of whatever it is, whatever you did, and you can be dismissed or removed from office. In Boulder, it can be censured. And this is one of the ones we talked about a lot, and I couldn't find an example anywhere in Utah. In Boulder, it specifically says, before the vote even takes place, the other members of the council think that you have a conflict, they can vote and by majority vote, order you to recuse yourself. And finally, family definition. This goes anywhere from Orem, it says, a member of the immediate family, to the opposite strain, although not defined, it says family and friends and groups and associations, and some of your loyalty. And then we've got a couple of definitions of relative that, you know, that are very specific, spouse, that, you know, to the fact that Boulder even says, even if you get divorced, that doesn't end your relationships. Right? So some very specific provisions about what family means. This is the only one I saw that included friends as well. And so we, again, as a, as a matter of just kind of compromising to get a draft up the table, we went with that. Something that was a little bit more than immediate family, but wasn't as broad as the, the social friends or. Excellent question.
All the friends.
So that, so that was the presentation I had to help you understand where we came from and what's going on in the others. And then, turn the time back a little to continue the discussion on the four questions. I think, maybe I'll shoot this over here in case it's useful, this switch back to return to you.
Thank you. That was very helpful. Now I could go over that all the things I wanted to say. Go back to the four questions there. So that is just one of these questions, and I'll, I'll just kind of share my current feelings, although it seems like each time we talk about this or if you're at an ordinance system, more ideas coming, but I, I like the system of the state, so I'm a little concerned that the current ordinance applies only to the council, or to whatever you change with that, minor, minor, not magic, current, this great policy. And also, I think the current situation, I don't think the mayor, you know, have a right, state law, but then you choose a district policy.
Right. And let me clarify that what, when I say that, remember, we're focusing here on the idea of recusal. One of the reasons why a lot of the other statutes, well, and I'm not saying it's the only reason, but one of the reasons why most of the other statutes apply to everybody is because most of the other statutes are five pages long and talked about, and then we state all of the state law stuff now, prohibited standards of conduct and disclosure requirements. Ours is the only one I looked at where, you know, one paragraph about recusal was the whole, this entire thing. So, so here, we're talking just about the idea of recusal. And you're right, there's nothing in the state law or even city policy that requires or even any employee to recuse themselves. That's just some, they want the policy to say.
So what I was going to suggest, I think it would be worthwhile to have a conversation with the administration, some fashion, like, you know, the meetings, get some feedback. Is this separation that we have right now, where the council operates under one set of rules, planning commission, other boards and commissions operate under administrative policy that minor, minor, this is, I have a little, that is going to be, using the people that we see the council operate on, like, and, but, and, I think it's a good little discussion. I think we'd all want to have a, a, ordinance that, that had all situations, but what would be the reason why we want to have, give this experience? As far as, what's the restrictions?
So the idea, and this is shorthand, so I apologize for that, but the restrictions question is, what behavior specifically should be, is it just voting, or is it all discussing? To discuss with other people, take yourself out of the room, or not?
Yeah, and that's one, that's a very basic philosophy question, this whole thing. So state ordinance is kind of all the way over here on one, it focuses only on disclosure, no, no mention of recusal at all. And a lot of cities then just do that, and just go with the state ordinance, don't add anything to it. Provos are pretty much over this, and if you do, you have to recuse yourself on here, and you mustn't die as, and, just, and that's one thing I'll, try to fix with this, and utilities and situations right now, or some of those examples that Mr. Jones said, if you kind of have this decision today, do I have a concrete device that this cover of this is, and then if you do, then you, you, but you cannot show, or you, you, no, come on, you might, might want, want to disclose, as, as you, and if that might affect your jurisdiction, if you make, they probably have a better system, that makes sense? There's almost, almost, which, which, so, yes, I guess we, yeah, we're, we're, we're a little bit down there, where clearly, situations, materials being, to, 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 to disclose. But then there's that question, question of, do you define the recusal as simply not voting, or not participating at all in the decision, or, and a couple of these ordinances have that addition, so you can't even talk to the consequences, or, and, clearly, that sounds good, I wonder, Mr. Jones is, is he, is he a social legal college for that, is a, a citizen, has the right to talk to the council member about an issue and so on?
I think the way both of them are stated is that you can't talk to another member of the public body, so it wouldn't prevent you as citizens from just talking to each other about that. And one of the questions, you know, one of the reasons why we, the committee, we talked about, we add deliberation or take deliberation out is, okay, how does this apply to work meetings, when something is, when an idea is tossed out, so you're there, and the conflict is really defined, and so.
Okay, so those, those are the two questions, I guess, I guess the round meeting right now, on that one, is a number of these ordinances talk about important perception, and, so I think that if we made it so you could not vote, but still participate in discussion, sort of hitch other councilmen, right, in the public meeting, I'm, I'm, I guess that might not come across as, or, reception, so I'm kind of leaning toward, kind of speaking of what we had, stepping on the dais, and feel like this is, you know, and the penalty, that's another one. So one of the things that I thought we were trying to accomplish is, we've got a lot of situations right now where, 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 where it requires, or has a, that will tend to encourage council members to recuse themselves, or maybe, or wouldn't be too. And so I'm not sure if adding a strict penalty that have, still, is right now, with our standards, still, I'm not sure that's necessary, or that, or, encourage more participation with the, with the, and again, I should probably point out that even though the chairman just showed you that every other ordinance I look at has a current provision, that's probably at least in a partial explain, but in fact, if every one of those has conditional standards of conduct, besides recusal, you're, so, I don't know that I can say that any of those is intended specifically to say, if anyone just stepped down from the dais, they just said violation of the entire, I really, family definition, which, which was all in that, what this, what this, we did. Very interesting to read that.
So I think we might be more helpful to you, to you, with your ordinance, bring questions from the documents that you provided us, return those by, let's say, a week or two, right? So by the, shall we say? And then you may, well meet with, with the, with the, before you return with a formal draft, like that definition, especially with, with the description. And any general questions, or anything that is missing before we, before you submit? Who determines whether there's something to consider, and how is that?
Well, that's an excellent question. That's, one of the reasons why I really think ordinance needs to be amended, because right now, we have tortured convolutions of trying to determine whether it applies or not, and it is, and we feel like, I really, I think, so, these definitions that focus on, focus on individualized material effect, distinguishable from the public effect, are much more workable because the rule is more, but at the end of the day, I guess I can answer your question, it's up to the individual council member to determine whether they think the rule applies to them. If they decide that it does, there's no one to say that they're wrong, but then, not no consequence to say they're wrong, to recuse themselves. If you fail to recuse yourself, then that's where the penalty comes in. Should it be something that a citizen can come file a complaint with the prosecutor and, and prosecute it? Should it be something that someone filed a complaint with the city council itself, the council takes a vote, has to investigate, and takes a vote, has to, or, and that's really kind of undefined. The one thing that's in our proposal that is also in.
The one thing that's in our proposal that is also in, and I didn't go into this as a question, I think the committee was pretty comfortable, this was, should be a part of it, but this is in Salt Lakes and several of the other ordinances, is a specific provision that says you have the right to go ask the city attorney for an opinion before the meeting, and have to like rely on it. If the city attorney says it's not a conflict, you rely on the opinion of the recuser, and then none of the penalties can be applied. We put that in a way as kind of a safe, and it's possibly for those things.
So, I forget, how would you do those exposures?
So, every, every other year?
Every year.
Yes, the administration does it every year. The state law doesn't require you to do it every year, the state law requires you to run through your office, and then anything that's written, it's just. And the administration is shortchanging catching when certain, when certain states can't change, while it requires policy minister, and the council by policy has adopted it as well. And then this trading is, right?
Thank you. Thank you. We turn up, you, Ryan Farby, update on establishing council priorities for the 2015 calendar here.
All right, we need to do a fun activity, and I guess we're excited about this. I emailed you last week, or it might have been the week before, about council priorities. So, I have created this, we're going to do something similar. You guys remember our budget prioritization we did in June? Well, flipping it, and we're going to do a current council priorities. I don't have a slide show. Do you see that? Okay, so I'm going to briefly go over each one. In the email I sent out, I can give a schedule today, we're going to handle this one through five, what your personal priorities would be, and then we'll put together the numbers and our work session on September second, we'll come back and have the top three, and you can approve that, we can have a discussion at that point. I did ask if there were any additional ones that you wanted, I didn't receive any responses, but I do have a couple of links bases here, and if you have, if there's more, two extras, you can put that on there as well, but we would want to know those before you come up and go, so everyone can have a chance to follow. Before we do that, I'm just going to go over each one really briefly to further define it. It was on the sheet that I emailed to you, along with that, that email, but just for clarification. So, the first one is a capital, a general fund capital improvement dedicated funding source. Budget committee talked a little bit about, you know, the capital improvement means, and also the budget gap means, but that's, that's one of the potential priorities. The next one, the conflict of interest, recusal is a pile, we just talked about that a little bit.
Yeah, I just.
Oh, sorry.
And I'm, I'm sorry, maybe I have a one last question, but you explain a little bit of the capital improvement dedicated funding source and structure, you know, is there?
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, the dedicated funding source would be, would be saying it's, you know, it's a priority upon a dedicated source just for capital improvement in the general fund, right? And the structure, structurally balanced budget would be, I guess, more broad, right? It would maybe include that as part of it, but when we, when we talk about structurally balanced budget, we're talking about that gap, or as very show that line that goes down, you know, going straight. So, that would be more focused on other general fund monies other than capital. The third one, continued implementation and policy governance model. Matt talked a little bit earlier today about how we adopted that model, we've been trying to use that in our process, this review, reports, so that's on there. Development agreements, alternative approaches, we kind of had a few discussions about them, but if that's a priority. People's lobbying, which Tom over here described to us, and we'll talk over it further a little later today. Good land board program, I think we've talked enough about that. The neighborhood program evaluation, which there's a committee on, anyway, I am. RAP tax, recreational arts parks tax, regulatory tools for proportional control of subsidized housing, that's kind of a big name there. But essentially, essentially the exploration, regulatory tools that may be, that may be available, may need to occur to know what can be done to save the use of subsidized housing for certain reasons. So, just kind of exploring that. Structurally balanced budget, we just talked about, framework fee structure and evaluation of fees, we started that, the budget committee, as our discussion showed earlier today. Vision 2030 update, alternative city revenue, you know, that, that kind of goes along with our discussion with balanced budget as well, but that focuses more on finding different ways to fund, you know, city programs, projects. And then the benchmarking evaluation for 2015. The council in the past has done benchmarking for certain programs or apartments, and that would be, if you want that, to be done for 2015, that's probably high. So, you got a question?
Yeah, I just, I think I'm thinking the same way Mary is, on some of those, there are five that relate to the budget. So, if I were to rate one through five, and all those budget things that are important to me, and they're all in our intent statements, those are all things that are really important, and all my five are there, but I don't have everything, you know, that I find is a priority or not, not as where I'm kind of struggling with this activity, is it?
Yeah, and I guess, you know, with the budget, I mean, you could say budgetary things, but, you know, as a man explains, it's one of the three biggest priorities. If we just say budget, that's pretty wrong. So, we tried to kind of take out some of the current penalties, but I guess, we can combine any of this, you know, that's good, practical. But I wanted to ask, you know, before I, when we give you the marks, and then you come up here and vote, is there anything else that you want to see up here?
I've got to do a really broad one. Keep the provost the best place to raise a vote.
Okay. We did have that as one of the options on both, it just wasn't very specific, so that's kind of why we didn't include it. Yeah, we'll put it here.
Brian, how would you feel in response to Tim's observation? If one were to split the vote using the ranking numbers, so, for example, there are five items there pertaining to the election, suppose council members would consider that the most important, and then simply put a one by each of those five?
And then not have any others, or still have two or more?
Go on from there.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you can do it that way. I think that the more specific we are, the easier it will be.
Don't split the votes.
It's just our opinion, the more specific we are, the easier it will be to say we accomplished our goal, rather than having it really wrong.
For me, if I were to pick of the five, I would do the structurally balanced budget, because it includes, in my mind, all of those. But when it comes to user fee, that, if it's a lower mark, is it because the structurally balanced budget got it all, or, you know what I mean? It, for me, it's going to be a little skewed, because they're, those are all.
Right, no, I understand, and that's a.
Maybe structurally balanced budget is, again, too broad of a topic, because really that's a multi-year, whole, like, component effort.
Right, and that could be taken.
Let's see, with what we have, each of us should use it in color.
Yeah, is there any other ones that anyone would like to add?
Updating the code, or, or some, certain, say, subject.
And we'll take a ten minute break, so as to allow you the chance to register your rankings.
One through five, yeah, so just, so we're going to do a little bit, yeah, we're going to do a little bit different. Here, we just had to do one through five on each one. This one, we're going to do.
You'll get each number one.
This one, yeah, you'll get each number one, so one through five. So, I will.
And this doesn't, this doesn't tie your hands in anything.
Right.
December, you'll be all come back and, if those shake this, to something final.
Yeah, and all, yeah, after this meeting, I'll pencil out the results.
Well, you think you send this by Mr. Hale's, too?
Yes, so, yes, I am going to email it.
So, they're in Boston. Oh, awesome.
Yeah, I'm getting out.
I got it.
My only pill I get to have.
Yeah, she gets like these little packages.
Hi, I'm, I'm going to save a few. What's that? A gift? You did?
Well, did you hear, did you hear my movie start on the turntable?
Yeah.
Didn't know.
This is interesting. I need to modify this. It's executed. And like, I don't think it's all. It's not. It's like, I will wait for it. I'll say that. One.
Yeah, that's. And that's a little more. Some of your answers are great. So. Three movies in a month. You're trying to get back. No. So I get. Is that true? Make it work. You didn't know. Well, that's. It's. It's correct. Yeah. Um, this is good. So you know what? This is. I still want to know. Okay. So what was that? Oh. Really, very patient. So like. Chinese. It's necessary. Your husband is sure you are. Soon. You know, I get more excited. So. Not Chinese. So. No, that's not. I think you look like a Jamaican. Jamaican has a lot of.
Yeah. Yeah.
Such a making sure. Already. That's cute. What? It's about a special exhibit called church. In that first day. Oh. Did you try the shirt?
Yeah.
So we don't. Yes.
I don't know if you muted or something. That's wrong.
I'm hiding it, huh?
So that things aren't. Should be said. Should be buried.
Do you have secrets to tell me? Or do you? No, I can't hear from you. Two. Yeah, let's skip the other.
Yeah. Glad you understood.
One more time. There's. Muted. That's a little more. I did.
Yeah, just.
Good. Excuse me, Barry.
It's coming through.
Good job. Just like. Yes, thank you. David, that's back to us for years of. Trust. Matter is one that I have spoken to the council about before. And wanted at Matt's request to update you on that. And then also his request to ask for a motion to proceed. I presented the concept of the people's lobby, which is a innovation introduced by Jeff Swift in the literature on popular democracy as a as a experiment on the part of the council with a reasonable probability of enhancing the maturity of neighborhood program to be sponsored. I have, at the same time, attempted to design the experiment in such a way as to make minimal demands on the council's resources. It will proceed in three phases. One of them would begin shortly and continue into the next year. And that would be a notifying the public of this concept of people's lobby. And in the course of that invitation, that is that notification inviting anyone who is interested to become part of the lobby to do so. Now, all of this would occur by means of Nation Builder, the system of Jeff and the Vice President of Nation Builder, who visited with us last month outline. So in addition to publicizing the opportunity through our own council resources, I know the Daily Herald has indicated an interest in helping us broadcast the opportunity to the to the larger community. And so the resources of the council, that is, of the staff would be required would be largely those of training Karen, the Nation Builder, and and also enlisting her assistance with the public outreach. Jeff Swift has volunteered to provide the training. Last week, and now we we move into the second phase. I met with Chris Karpowitz, Professor of Political Science at BYU, who is a noted moderator of public forums. And he has agreed with much interest, I should say, to make some of his students available for this training so that they would in turn play the role of moderator in the deliberations of the people's lobby. The that would that would constitute the second phase, their training. And then the third phase would be the actual coming together of the lobby, the deliberation taking place by Nation Builder. And that would conclude with the other demand of council resources. And that is the services of our own council to assist the people's lobby in preparing a legislative draft for the council's consideration. So Karen's involvement early on, which would include training, and Brian's involvement toward the end of things, I think are reasonably the only real demands on the resources of the council. Have you any questions?
Well, the proposal is.
No cost. I have an account. That is no no cost for access to Nation Builder, if that was your question.
The training will be brief for Karen and the students.
That's right. That's right.
And the moderator, how? I.
Moderator has essentially, as I talked to you about some time ago, three three major roles to play. One is to assure that every voice is heard. So there would be thirty thirty-four voices in addition to moderators that would be heard. The second is to ensure that there is active exchange between members of the people's lobby. That if things seem to be hesitating, there is confusion about what the issues are at hand, then clarity is provided so as to encourage a flow, an active flow between members of the people's lobby. And and third would be to assure that a a reasonable number of perspectives on the issue that the lobby has chosen to put up are exposed. So that the issue receives attention from a number of directions.
Do we have a a specific member of people that we need to get off and consider a success? What are we going to?
Well, we we hope that there would be someone from every neighborhood. And that individual would be selected randomly from those in the neighborhood that have expressed, who have joined the lobby, let's put it that way. And and our hope there is that there would be at least a handful, five or six, at least five or six in every neighborhood so as to provide something to select from. Having one served on the lobby, then the lobby can be solved. And that server would not be eligible to serve again until some later point in time.
My only concern is. Wait, I want to. They just actually just getting the numbers. We need to create this. That's.
Too bad.
Well, that's that's my.
We have an expert with us. He's just taking another bite of dinner right now. I'd ask for that. That's just on that very matter. Will. I will work closely with her to sort of, if you will, to use the old metaphor of beating the bushes.
That's great. And how can we help? Because I think there are two people.
Talking it up.
Talking about getting on the web website.
Can you be helpful for not just that clarity that by motion, but this is something that council is authorizing to happen or to pervert or.
I will invite a motion. Thank you.
Can I just ask, Mr. Jones, if you have the time and then what whatever is required, are you amenable to the, I guess, the one?
Well, yeah, I think we can make it work. I had a I did have a legitimate question. I'll ask now. I could have. Is the intent that proposals in the lobby come to work session with any first to see if they're in interest? Or that they come? Or that the legislation is drafted before the council is even expressing adoption?
I think the latter, this is meant to be theirs to do. And and the selection of the topic is theirs to make. It's not better than.
The concern I have about that, well, I guess I have two. One is not a time that may take, having no idea what how many will be the three or how complex they are. And two, it puts me a little bit in an awkward position because if I'm because I'm your legal counsel, not theirs. So I'm not sure how I would draft them without me vetting for you. And if they come to a if they come with a proposal that I think leaves legal liabilities to the city.
I'll I'll do this. I'll talk to Mr. Wood and ask him if he would make the staff available. Because it's just drafting an empty legislation.
You're talking about Mr. West?
West, I'm sorry, Mr. West.
And what you're saying, just after.
Experiment involved.
Oh, you're.
Thirty years. Or her side.
Um, so it's an experiment of your one.
That's right.
Well, I think that I think that certainly satisfies the volume. So I have no problem being involved. Do you think there's a little bit of an issue, given?
I agree.
Even from Mr. West's staff, where again, they represent the city. The proposal is not what best interests the city.
Yeah, let me discuss that with him.
Okay.
To see what he would recommend.
Okay.
So it may, in fact, be resources otherwise than.
Just one suggestion. I don't know how. It's taking something from taking legislation from concept to actual draft legislation is a big leap. And in my estimation, it's probably sufficient enough if they have a draft concept for the legislation. This is what the legislation is intended to do, accomplish. Here are the outcomes that we would like it to do.
Right, this is all.
And then find out the council will therefore for its actual drafted legislation, which at point, then Brian could jump in without having competition.
Well, let's process it before we come to it. The training would include training in their contributing jointly to the drafting of the document we have received formally.
Just there's going to be some illegal. Sorry, or or. Or pass up.
Yeah. I don't expect it to be insurmountable.
I just. I think it's really. It's true. It's just basically trying. So. Hope is that they can consider the administration. And also want to. The commission.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gary. All in favor? That's unanimous, Mr. Hales, excuse, thank you. Gentlemen, we turn to you for the discussion on a request of a request by the City of Purple Public Health Department for various amendments to Title 15 of Purple City Code to clarify certain provisions to update the consolidated fee schedule. Mr. Graves.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I'm in town, town's house. She's been working on this for a number of months. And there. What we actually. The current or two of these. Those proposals which need to be consolidated. And essentially, there's about three basic elements. The first is to try to clarify some of the terms that can be used within the title of the code. And and bring them and or or current. So that they are flexible. What's what's being dealt with. We'll try out the state. The second thing was to try to bring consistency between the Title 15 grading requirements and in Section 30 here. And in Title 15, you know, 3035. And and house in consistency with the grading section of. And that the third area of street standards. And it was two years ago, 2011, left the process of data transportation master plan at that time. And within that master plan update, there were some changes made to the street cross section. And the narrower street cross section is recommended that actually often is part of that master plan. Felt the official. And so some of the rewrite in that area to street standards has to be that update for the master. And, you know, and so that's that's kind of the the three areas that we're dealing with. Better. Changes made. And the ordinance quantity, they have three street cross sections. That were included in the ordinance, they actually. I always establish. There's seven. Street cross sections are actually held by standard prime. That developing cation. In order to update the code, I think those change the ordinance. Uh, foundation as the case to close them down by standard prime. And for. The council, like, very. I don't know. Those those standards. They're a good change that made. Well, it's because what. There was reference made to some updates to the consolidated. These. With the type of the ordinance changes that are being imposed. Three bits just taking east over. A little bit of interning. Or. They have many. They have. It's been. About the council. Um, with the. So that's one of the the consolidate portion of it. Adding change. Because with them, the consolidated fee schedule. Just to be referenced. Any change would be consolidated, be scheduled, just to be referenced to certain fees. The ordinance. Now they're consolidated. That's kind of a, that shit out, I don't know if you want to comment.
It seems to be a housekeeping matter, if you don't mind my putting it that way. And every, that's akin to the same activity we engage in here as we move through municipal code and we'll use a kind of finer brain to determine what ambiguities exist or, or in fact, there may be contradictions where the code needs to be amended. It sounds as though you're asking for the very same.
You know, there's three, I think, subsequent things and change. You know, change before, before the correction.
And the lines, the lines with the master plan. Please.
Um, I wonder, is the laws, about a 25% rate changing to 30%?
Yes.
I'm a little concerned about some of the areas. Tell me why, why they, why that changed.
That, that's in the definition portion. So there maybe isn't anything that, that the code, you know, we go to this code and say, okay, here's what the code says. It's a definition of, of the steep slope in, in the definitions. And years ago, probably a dozen years ago, uh, city used the grading standard. There was an average of 25% on a parcel. But it didn't matter how good the parcel was, um, one lot, 100 by 100 feet or 108 parcel. But the average slope of that, uh, times 24%. There's about what was, the city went through, you know, eliminated the language of average slope. So, so the slope is 30%. Um, that's, uh, we see the steep slope. So it's one of those items that was, what, um, tied with the code was putting a little side standard, considering the reference to the 30% for great. Um, with the definition, there's less. Not, not really saying, yeah, we can't give them off, give them off the steeper slopes.
May I ask, what prompted you to do this? Is it blaming on our relatively new director?
The thing is that we asked every time we looked at the code, like, man, we can fix that. And, uh, he had enough of it. It's the X marks that I think, we gotta fix this. And, 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 you know, they're, they're likely to change in the future. One, one especially relatively frustrating standard. Uh, just to go through a next transportation match, uh, of a, of a whole problem. Okay.